I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Womet Public School District 39 for Monday, December 18th, 2017. We are in the McHaleian Education Center. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you.
I'm happy to have Principal Kelly Jackson and her High Crest students to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. At tonight's meeting, we have students from our 5th and 6th grade Student Advisory Boards. This year across the campus, we have monthly themes including "We Are Upstanders," "We Are Grateful," and "We Are Giving." Our student leaders applied to be a part of our Student Advisory Boards, and now they are doing great things to keep up acts of kindness, positivity, and to set an example for others throughout HMS. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hello, I am Canoa, and we are members of the High Crest Student Advisory Board. Our mission is to strive to make High Crest a better place.
Hello, I am Peter. We want to help increase acts of kindness and hopefully decrease acts of bullying or other unkind types of behavior.
Hello, I'm Ari, and I'm from the 5th Grade Student Advisory Board.
Hi, I'm Tal Belkend, and I'm from the 6th Grade Student Advisory Board. We have focused on being upstanders and leaders and what it means to be Hawks. Honest, accountable, walkers, kind, safe.
Hello, I'm Addison Foley, and I'm from the 5th Grade Student Advisory Board.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Zock. Specifically, what we have done is helped organize the kindness quotes for the elementary schools, spreading positive messages in the front of the school, and posting inspirational quotes and pictures around the school.
Hi, I'm your greatest nightmare. Caroline Cernich, okay.
And I'm in the 5th Grade Student Advisory Board.
Hi, I'm Gillian. Currently, we have organized a hashtag "We Are Giving" Homer Activity based on the book "The Giving Tree," where students can share how they give back to High Crest.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, High Crest students. Our artwork tonight, on display behind me, 7th graders used their creative ideas to craft dream drawings that focused on transforming their drawing skills by altering their thinking. Students sketched geometric shapes to form three-dimensional objects. Students then practiced shading using light and shadows to enhance their artwork. 8th graders learned about color theory by exploring ideas related to light, symbolism, and color schemes. After practicing blending and various printing techniques, they created a painting using a particular mood or time of day. They were required to choose a color scheme that expressed the feeling of their scene. So I hope you will all get a chance to check out that excellent artwork behind us. Next up is approving the minutes, but before we get there, before we get to the heart of the meeting, I do have some procedural notes for tonight. As we described at the last board meeting, the members of the board have decided to change our public comment procedures. The new procedures are designed to allow as many members of the public as possible to get a chance to express their views while maintaining an orderly and efficient working meeting of the board. We will vote on these new procedures tonight, and if approved, they will be in effect for tonight's public comment periods. The new procedures are described in the revisions to Board Policy 2:230, but briefly, during the first comment period, each person may present, excuse me, each person present may be recognized one time to speak for up to three minutes on whatever topic they choose. During the second comment period, those who have not yet spoken may be recognized to speak for three minutes, and those who have already spoken may clarify or extend their remarks, but for no more than one minute. We will notify you of the limits when you are recognized. For the sake of clarity, the limits apply to whoever is speaking. We will not allow speakers to be recognized for their allotted time and then speak again on someone else's behalf for another three minutes. Next, tonight's meeting will be procedurally a little different than the norm, so let me take a moment to explain what will happen. We are currently in a regular meeting of the board. We will review and vote on board policies in a moment. Then we will adjourn to directly into a hearing on the 2017 levy. For those of you sitting here, other than a quick procedure, you'll notice no difference. We will hear presentations on the levy, discuss our thoughts, and provide a period for the public to comment. We will then adjourn back from the levy hearing into the regular board meeting. Again, you will notice very little difference. The vote on all of this month's remaining board business, including the levy, will take place late in the regular board meeting, as is our standard practice. Finally, I want to remind members of the public and board members alike that we are in a public meeting and among our neighbors and fellow residents. The board members have all agreed that it is important to emphasize that we expect appropriate conduct from everyone. On behalf of all of the members of the board, I ask you to please speak only when recognized by me, and please refrain from other extraneous distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, clapping, cheering, or booing. Thank you. So with that out of the way, I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2017 regular and executive session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2017 regular and executive session minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions that you'd like to draw our attention to? Seeing none, all of those in favor of approving the minutes as they stand, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries by general consent. Now I seek a motion to approve as second and final reading revised Board of Education Policies 2:230, 6:70, 6:80, 6:100, 6:110, 6:120, and 6:140.
I move to approve as second and final reading revised Board of Education Policy 2:230, public participation at Board of Education meetings, and petitions to the board, 6:70, religious holidays, 6:80, controversial issues, 6:100, resources for teachers, animals, 6:110, truant alternative and optional educational programs, 6:120, special education, and 6:140, education of homeless children.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion on these policies? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
This is a yes or no, sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
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 Yes. All those in favor have voted yea, and the motion carries. So now, I request a motion to adjourn to the public hearing for the 2017 levy.
I move to adjourn to the public hearing on the 2017 levy.
May I have a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Great, the motion, any opposed? No, okay. The motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the levy hearing. For the levy hearing, will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Great, and now it's time for financial presentations. Dr. Lechner.
Thank you. We will have three separate levy presentations tonight. I'm going to open with a big-picture overview that will provide highlights from the presentation I made last night. I've added some additional clarity. I know the levy process is complex, and it's easy for it to be difficult to fully understand. The district asks Cook County for a dollar amount and not a percent increase or nor a tax rate. There are two components that are used to determine the dollar amount we request, CPI, which is known, and new property growth, which is always a guess. It's a real challenge to anticipate when new property will arrive on the tax record. In my view, it is the new property growth estimate that drives uncertainty and concern. And honestly, we're not going to get a 4% tax increase. The percent increase that we ultimately get is not the percent, the percent increase that we ultimately get is not the percent increase seen on tax bills. The biggest driver of change to individual property tax bills is the property's value itself. Now CPI is the first component to our levy. We're allowed by law to increase our levy by CPI, and since the referendum, the CPI has grown by a total of 7.7%. Given that about 1/3 of an individual tax bill is generously given to District 39, the individual tax increase does not imply to the entire tax bill. So overall, the taxes wouldn't be increased by 7% over these five years, but rather more likely 1/3 of 7.7%, which is closer to 2.6%. And when you spread that out over five years, it's a half a percent per year. Next, we show revenue growth over the past five years. As you can see in this chart, it's just under 8.7% total revenue growth over the last five years, and we noted that 1/3 of that is new construction. This means that we've had, on average, 1.7% income increases to District 39. Our demand for services is strong as we continue to deliver an exceptional educational program. However, we have normal and customary increases in our expenses. In my view, this slide here is fundamental because it's the very philosophy which guides the board's decisions. The voters approved a referendum in 2011. The increase was received because of that referendum, and it was supported by the community. This established a new baseline. As a result, the following guiding principles were then embraced by the board. The first is holding a minimum fund balance of at least 30%, even though our neighbors have higher fund balances at 50% or more. Next, the goal was to budget conservatively, and indeed, we have embedded unknown state and Illinois fiscal issues into our budget projections. You're going to hear more about that in the third presentation tonight because we made some adjustments to those assumptions. Third, we connect revenues to expenses. All of our staff have salary increases that are now connected to CPI in some format. We no longer have guaranteed step-and-lane increases. Finally, all of us have to maintain educational excellence while living within our means, and District 39 continues to do that. And to show that, we have the slide that you've seen many times. We actually began showing this in the referendum, and we've updated our website every year to reflect that. We continue to have one of the lowest operating costs per pupil in the township, as well as outside the township. Similarly, the property tax per pupil is also one of the lowest. And this one, we saw last month too, but what if your tax bill was $15,000 last year? If we approve levy of a CPI of 2.1%, the portion of your tax bill going to District 39 will increase by $115, which is approximately a 7.7% increase on your tax bill. Well, could you see a bigger tax increase? The answer is, did I say something? Oh, I'm sorry, .7, thank you. .77%. If your property taxes increase because of that, it's due to the reassessment of your property, loss of an exemption, and sometimes if somebody else's property value decreases due to property tax appeal or an exemption, that money gets redistributed. So our collective aim here, and I think everybody agrees, is to balance the needs of students with the interests of taxpayers. CPI plus new property growth is the minimum revenue that we can ask to maintain our excellent programs. And we mustn't forget about the legislation supporting a two-year tax freeze that's still on the table. Moving away from our past-practice levy will result in a much deeper and unsustainable decline in our fund balances. Next, we have Ms. Buschemi. She's going to begin with the standard levy presentation. The format of her first report reflects our past practice. However, we understand and acknowledge the diversity of opinion regarding the levy. As a result, she will then provide five-year financial projections generating several levy options for the board to consider. Ms. Buschemi.
Just while you're getting ready, I will ask the AV folks if there's any way we can turn up the volume for the back of the room. I don't know if there's a way to do that, but if it's possible, okay. It doesn't look like we're able to do that, so you'll have to listen carefully. Yeah, hold it close to your mouth. And then the other thing is I forgot a programming note, which is that we are, for those of us watching on TV, we're only live streaming tonight for the first 30 minutes because of a conflict with another board meeting. However, the entire meeting is being recorded and will be available on the web later. So I apologize for that interruption.
Thank you. Tonight is the public hearing for the 2017 tax levy. The law requires a public hearing when the tax levy exceeds 5% of the prior year's extension. However, District 39 upholds a higher standard for transparency than required by law. We provide an annual hearing to maximize transparency with our community. The levy is the amount requested by a governmental entity to be raised from property taxes. This levy request reflects the standard practice of extending for CPI plus the estimated value of new property growth as the starting point for tonight's presentation. There are different options on the levy request, and once we review this standard assumption, we will move into the five-year financial projections along with presenting the impact to fund balance for the different scenarios based on the Board of Education's decision. There are several variables that help determine the amount of the levy. These are defined on this slide. The equalized assessed value, or EAV, in a district is determined by local and county assessors and is an unknown at this time. Under the Property Tax Extension Limiting Law, or PTEL, the base levy increase cannot increase more than the prior year's published consumer price index, CPI, plus new property growth, or a 5% cap. The 2017 estimated levy is based on CPI of 2.1% plus estimated new property growth. The estimated levy is based on several variables as you see listed on this slide. The EAV and new property growth are estimated at this time. In 2016, District EAV showed an increase of 25.3% due to the triennial reassessment. We are estimating our EAV will remain flat for our 2017 estimated levy. However, when the county clerk extends the final levy allocation, the taxes will be adjusted to reflect the actual 2017 EAV. CPI is published by the federal government as a measure of annual inflationary impact. The December 2016 CPI of 2.1% was used for the 2017 levy. New property growth is estimated at this time. We begin by using a historical 12-year average of 15.6 million. Next, we are adding 16.5 million due to the renovation and reopening of Mather Place on Old Glenview Road in 2016. Additionally, we project 8 million for new construction within our community. In total, we are estimating new property growth at 40 million. The aggregate levy includes the bond and interest levy of $1.2 million. The debt service amount is not part of the levy request since the debt was previously approved by voters. This is the amount of the actual debt service payments for 2018. Shown here are the factors that are built into the 2017 levy. The amount of the levy in the cap funds is 52.6 million allocated by fund is shown on this slide. The total aggregate levy request is 53.9 million. The total aggregate levy request is 53.9 million, and the district expects to receive a 2.84% increase over last year based on CPI of 2.1% and .74% in anticipated new property growth based on historical data. The average taxpayer will see an increase for District 39 of 2.1%, which is approximately 1/3 of their total tax bill. Are there any questions?
Board members, do we have any questions on this report? Ms. Kenny?
I have a couple of questions. In the forecast that you, okay, I don't have any questions at this point. Go ahead.
We do have one more report, so that's fine.
That's where I was.
Anybody else have questions on this report? Okay, why don't you go ahead with the next report? Thank you.
We will now look at the impact to District 39's operating fund balances for the different scenarios being discussed. The Board of Education's decision tonight regarding the 2017 levy will impact the five-year financial projections. These projections have been discussed at our school finance meeting in detail, and there are several assumptions that have been built into the projections. Revenue assumptions are as follows. Each year, property tax revenue is increased by CPI plus new construction. The 2017 tax extension is projected to generate a 2.1% CPI increase plus new property growth. Fiscal year 19 through '23 reflects CPI increases based on Bloomberg's estimates. New property growth is based on a five-year historical average of 13.1 million, and in recent years, actual new property growth has been slightly higher than estimated. Our levy collections are at 99% collection rate based on the last four levy years' collections. General state aid and state-mandated categorical grants assume fiscal year 18 amounts remain flat for fiscal year 19 through '23. The state's fourth payment of categorical grants for fiscal year 17 was received in fiscal year 18. So far, that's the only payment that's been received. The assumptions include four payments each year from the state. Similarly, federal aid is projected to remain level for those same years. Corporate personal property replacement tax assumes level revenue for fiscal years 19 through '23, and interest income is budgeted at .75% of last year's fiscal fund balance. The district has a conservative investment policy. Local revenues in both the Education and Transportation Fund reflect the current student fee structure approved by the Board of Education. There is pending legislation for Senate Bill 851, which would implement a property tax freeze in 2018 and '19. This bill is not reflected in our standard assumptions. Our expenditure assumptions are as follows. Certified salaries are based on a negotiated contract through fiscal year 19. The savings from retiring teachers is also included in the projections. Administrative and support staff salaries are projected at CPI increases for fiscal years 19 through '23 with a floor of 2%. Our health insurance costs are projected to increase 10% for fiscal years 19 through '23. The proposed pension cost shift estimates are built into the model for fiscal years 19 through '23. Purchased services and supplies and materials are projected to increase by 3% annually. In the O&amp;M Fund, the model is adjusted to reflect the cost of planned capital projects in fiscal year 19 through '23, as well as starting on the approved health, life, safety projects. Special education tuition costs are budgeted at an annual growth of 3% for fiscal years 19 through '23. As you look at the graph, you will see that the district's projected fund balance for fiscal years through '23 reflect maintaining the operating fund balances above the minimum level of 30% using the standard assumptions. Just to repeat, the standard assumption for our 2017 levy is based on CPI of 2.1% plus new property growth. One of the options that was requested by the board is to show a tax freeze in 2017 for one year by not increasing the levy. Chart 2 shows the long-term impact of even one-year freeze as our operating fund balance would dip below the board policy minimum level of 30% by fiscal year '22. The next option is on chart 3, showing the impact of Senate Bill 851, where we keep our standard assumption for the 2017 levy but have the property tax freeze for 2018 and '19 levies. In this case, we would dip below the operating fund balance percentage of 30% by fiscal year '22. The last option, shown on chart 4, is if the district had a three-year property tax freeze, 2017 through the board's decision, and 2018 and '19 due to Senate Bill 851. In this case, we would dip below the operating fund balance percentage of 30% in fiscal year '21. Tonight's decision by the board will determine which of these scenarios will be realized if all other assumptions built in the five-year financial projections remain the same. Are there any questions?
Do you board members have questions? Go ahead.
I do, thank you. Number one, in the last presentation, you talked about, I'm going off the standard assumptions right now, but there was a comment made that teacher salaries are tied to CPI. You said that in one way or another. As I was reading the assumptions just now, it's having an assumption in fiscal year 19 for an average increase of 4%, and fiscal year '20 through '23 assumes an increase equivalent to 3.5%. And we had just gone through CPI and showed an average CPI estimated at increasing 5% year-over-year. Total since 2012, 7.7. My question back to, how is it tied to CPI when these assumptions are above CPI?
That was negotiated in the last contract, and basically, we got rid of the step-and-lane increases. That was negotiated in the last contract, and basically, we got rid of the step-in-lane traditional model, and then what the board negotiates based on what they can afford, and retirements help with this, CPI plus some increment.
I understand what was negotiated, but when we keep saying it's tied to CPI, is it's like we just recognize what CPI is then and then give raises above CPI?
Yes.
Okay.
But not always.
Okay. That's a question. I know. I'm just tying it to comments made. My next question is, okay, later, we talk about where we ask for 4.63? Is that what -- or 3.6? But we're really only expecting to get 2.8? What's in our forecast, 2.8 or 4.36?
2.8.
Okay. So we're -- the slide number one without -- with standard assumptions would be reflective if we only received 2.8%? If we extended the levy by 2.8% versus 4.36%?
The assumption that's built in is we will only receive 2.8. The levy request is --
For 4.36?
Yes. But knowing we will not receive that amount.
Okay. But those bar charts right there are reflective of if we receive the expected 2.8%, not the 4.36%?
Yes.
Okay. Additionally, additionally, all the forecasts, the five-year, the five different ones, standard assumptions, then if we didn't increase the levy, extend the levy in '17, then if there was a property tax freeze, but we increased the levy in '17, then if there was a property tax freeze for '18 and '19, and if we did not extend the levy, that's all assuming different revenue projections. But doesn't it all take into account expenses? We don't change it. We don't change any of our expenses moving out?
Our expenditures are not based on our revenues.
Okay. Expenditures are not tied to revenues? Okay. Second, but what I'm asking, that wasn't it, but that's good information. What I'm asking is --
That's not true.
We -- I'm not asking that. Okay.
That's not exactly true. I mean, because, I mean, when we negotiate our contracts, we're basing them on the revenue that we expect in the future. So it's -- but I mean, once we have a negotiated contract, we follow through on the contract.
Okay. But for this, the question I'm asking right now is, these different, five different scenarios just assumed a difference in revenues based in all those five forecasts. It didn't assume anything different about our spending. We didn't adjust for spending. Maybe possibly if there was a tax freeze, we might not be able, we might go back and look at what we're planning for capital projects, et cetera. In other words, this is just showing the revenue side of change and not the spending side.
And that is what she was saying earlier, that we are not budgeting for cuts at this time.
Okay.
That's what she meant by not tying expenditures to revenues. But we absolutely, if we, when we had the 0.1 CPI growth, we did not just go out and start doing all kinds of new programs and stuff like that. So we closely monitor our expenditures, and there is a relationship between revenues and expenditures.
Okay. But again, I'm just asking. There were not any expense changes in any of these forecasts.
There are no expenditure cuts at this time. We're not touching our programs at this time.
Right. And a lot of the expenses, there are capital improvements that I wouldn't, could be looked, subjectively looked at as cuts because we said we want to do them, but in other words, could be looked at as maybe not needed. They're not currently here. So based on whatever's going to happen in the state, et cetera. Literally, I'm just clarifying.
Tracy, if I could follow up on your question, because it relates to, I think, what I understand about these numbers. So High Crest is in here, right? The improvement that we're planning on High Crest. Now, going into the future, are those capital improvements in here as well?
You'll see on my assumptions that each year, we have on page three of the assumptions on the bottom, you'll see every year, we have them based, we have the project cost, the estimated project cost based on each year. But as we've said, each one of those projects is independent, and they would, could be reordered based on a need or an emergency.
Okay. Okay, so I will back up here in a minute, but just to make this clear, so we're going, or we're planning, I think, we haven't approved it yet, right? The High Crest change, changes. And we're gonna, if we approve it, spend that money in which of these years?
Fiscal year '19.
Okay.
Construction would start in the summer.
For the first phase? Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just making it clear.
But it's in phases as well. '19 is one, '20 is one, '22?
Yeah.
It's on page three, actually.
Yeah.
Tracy, do you have more questions?
Like, two more. And then I'm done. I appreciate it, Mark. Let me get back to where --
And just while you're looking, so there was a question from the audience of whether you can ask a question. There is a time for audience members to make a comment. It's not yet. This is a board discussion, so I didn't want to be too curt there, but this is the time for board discussion. So go ahead, Tracy.
Kind of lost track of where I was going, but finally, you know, I'll stop there. I'll let everyone else ask a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions? John?
Yeah, I have one. I think a basic one. So what happens when our fund balances go below 30%?
A couple things happen. First of all, the Illinois State Board of Education requires us to maintain at least a minimum 25% before you would end up on either financial watch or financial warning. But it impacts our bond rating if we don't maintain a higher fund balance. It's our financial rating score with the state would go down if our fund balances go down. Three out of the five scoring rubric are based on fund balance and expenditure ratios, cash on hand.
So just to be clear, if our bond rate, our bond rating, excuse me, is affected, what you're saying is, we will pay more to borrow money?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Other questions from board members at this time? Go ahead.
Yes, one, well, two clarifications, I guess. The 25% number, if the state has sporadic payments of their bills, and I know it's scheduled to be four a year, we were one in arrears, et cetera, if they missed a payment and in the year, we only got three, that would be about 20% of?
In fiscal year '17, it was almost a half a million dollars that we didn't, we only received three payments. But because of the new education-based funding model, it's a combination between general state aid and some of our categoricals, we would only, the amount is greatly reduced. So if we don't get one payment, it's not going to be a half a million dollars like it is this year. It's closer to 100,000.
Okay. Thank you. And then on the contract, and I'm not positive I'm going to say these words exactly right, but I think I can get close. The contract was based on a two-part formula. It was based on CPI plus an amount to take into account that year-to-year, teachers have more experience and move forward in terms of their pay. Otherwise, we'd end up with whatever you hire a teacher for in year one, that would be their salary except for inflation for the rest of their career. Is that the way, one way of saying it?
One of the adjustments that we made on the negotiated contract last year had to do with the minutes that were added to the teacher's schedule. So it was CPI plus .75 for the adjusted schedule.
But the formula is CPI plus a fixed amount that was negotiated to take into account increased seniority, experience, et cetera. And there's a cap of 4%.
4% was the ceiling. The floor is 2 and 1/2%.
So the formula is based on CPI. It's not like in some other districts where they have a 4%, 5%, 6% per year, no matter what the CPI is, correct?
That's correct. We start with CPI.
All right, thank you.
Just, I'll just add to that, that one thing to remember is that our salary does not go up as CPI plus the adder because of the mix effect of more highly-paid teachers retiring and hiring younger teachers. So in fact, our total budget does not go up the same way that individual teachers' salaries go up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Great, thank you. Ellen?
I just wanted to respond to something that Tracy said that I feel is maybe misleading, actually, about the process that we've gone through as a board discussing this. The scenarios that we're seeing didn't happen in a vacuum. And the one thing is, is that the notion, and I'm not sure this is what you meant, but the notion that expenditures are not something that we've looked at or considered, I think is very misleading because we absolutely have considered the expenditures and potential, or potential, I should say, in budgets and planning. And the other part of it that's missing from this, you could kind of inversely, and it's where my concern lies, you could inversely say what's not on this standard assumption is also requests by the constituents for new projects that we have not budgeted for yet, such as kindergarten, such as including the orchestra in the school day. So I just, I want to clarify that because it's really important to me that, it's important to me that it's clear to the constituents that this is not, no one has sat down in these meetings, that I've seen nobody, and said, this is business as usual, let's just put a stamp on it. I think there's been a lot of great conversation and a lot of discussion, and I think a lot of thoughtful consideration based on what we stated originally or what you presented as our board philosophy of budgeting, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's a comment. Others?
Well, I, you know, I was just going to build on what you said just a second because the scenarios really were constructed to show with revenue freezing or revenue changes, what would happen to our budget if we kept our current spending plan. And it doesn't mean that if we were, our revenues were frozen in one, two, or three years, we would not absolutely step back and change our expenses. We would absolutely take a very close look, and I think we even all just agreed in a committee meeting that we were going to look at our expenses anyways, whether our revenues were frozen or not. So we're just, we're holding the expending portion of the budget stable through all of the scenarios and just looking at what would happen to what we've been talking about as our regular programming in the district, and what would happen to that if we, if our revenues changed or were frozen. So I think that's important to point out. This is not an expense discussion, it's a revenue freezing discussion.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
First, to appreciate those comments, and I wasn't implying that we hadn't discussed these things, but I will remind everyone that what was great about the way we talked about High Crest based on the needs we've been having or hearing and things we'd like to alleviate and push for, we built out those projects in four different phases that were not reliant upon each other, so we could be flexible in our thinking should we get, and I just, I think it's important to note that we, again, I definitely understand that this is a forecast of revenue, revenue impact, up or down, but I think it's, I don't want to use the word unfair or whatever, but we're not to assume that we can't be flexible in our spending or thinking as a result of revenue. I don't agree with that, and I think it should be noted that that is not reflected in these. One more question that, just want to verify that in 2011, the subjective where we're starting from point, that referendum was passed. Again, I want to remind everyone, after the district made an effort to make 4.5 million in cuts, that did not affect programming, the classroom, curriculum, or anything like that. And there was something else. Oh, just a que, when I was reading in the standard assumptions, it was, there was a note in the Adopt the Levy report on the first page where it does note that the general fact, when it's referring to PTO, PTO, the general effect of this act is to limit the revenue growth from the property tax for school districts to the rate of inflation plus an allowance for new property. This is what I'm referring to. During 2016, the EAV of property within the district's taxing boundaries increased to $1,817,523.158, or a 25.3% increase due to triennially assessment. So is that saying that as a result of the assessment, we already, already District 30 gave, even before going to levy, I sincerely don't understand this, levy is getting more money to start with, to levy?
No. The, what, the EAV is the base that they allocate the funds to.
Correct.
So we, we ask for a dollar amount, they tell us, based on the actual, we know what CPI is, they'll know what new property growth is, they'll know what EAV is, they know how much money, and that determines the tax rate that everybody pays. It's allocated to everyone. So what would happen is that when the EAV goes up, the tax rate goes down typically.
Okay.
So no, when our EAV went up by 25.3?
So why the notation here? Like, why the reference to that here? I'm just trying to figure it out in the context of this.
Because I have to use an EAV number?
Okay.
So I'm just saying that I'm using an EAV that's going to remain flat.
But was increased by 25.3%?
Right.
That is important because the, every three years, the EAV is redistributed. So when it goes up by that much, that means that some taxpayers whose property values are valued higher could get a higher increase and others could get a decrease.
Okay, so that's the only reason of notation, that's I'm saying, what, it's not notating here that there's more money?
There's not more money.
Okay. As a result of that, it's just redistributed differently via the tax rate?
That's exactly right.
And that's the way I understand. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I think one of the things that I just would reflect on this conversation that we've heard is that there is quite a bit of uncertainty in these future projections. There's uncertainty in our revenues, there's uncertainty in revenues, frankly, both up and down, although the state-imposed uncertainty tends to be down overall. The, and then to your point and others' point, there's a lot of uncertainty in our expenses. One thing that I haven't heard that I would reflect on is that we, I have not heard anyone make specific recommendations for programs that they would want to have cut, programs that they believe that are excessive or unnecessary. So when we talk about expenses fluctu, you know, could be higher or could be lower, that we could adjust them down under different scenarios, the one thing that I don't want to take away is, or people to take away is the idea that we know of costs that we could cut without affecting programs today. So typically, if we saw expenses, if we had to react to a lower revenue scenario, that would cut programs, is what the expectation is today, at least on my behalf.
I appreciate that, too. I don't see where cut programs would have to be cut at this point, but to your point, we have not looked at expenses by any means to see what could be removed without affecting anything. In fact, since I've said, we haven't looked at any kind of cost-cutting, look-back, belt-tightening, et cetera. So I, I absolutely agree with you on that.
Okay.
Can I, can I add one thing? Just because Alice already mentioned it, we decided that we, I mean, because I think the constituents should know, too, we decided that we are going to take a look at that and make sure that we sharpen pencils and really dig deep into it because it's time.
Yep, that's, that's right. So that was just for those in the audience that was at our last committee of the whole finance meeting. We look back. at our last committee of the whole finance meeting. We looked back and we said, you know, it's been several years, five, six years, since we did a really deep expense study to see, and as you said, I think the right phrase is sharpen our pencils and make sure that despite the fact that we have one of the lowest operating costs per pupil nearby, that we can't go lower without affecting programs. So, that is something that we expect to happen over the next few months. All right, yep.
I just had one more. One of the things that, that we have to always keep in mind is that a little over 80% of our costs are salaries, contract negotiated in most cases. So, out of the $50 million or so budget, that leaves right around $10 million, maybe a little bit less. So, when we're looking at costs, there is always room to sharpen pencils, but the starting point is around $10 million. So, if we're looking at millions of dollars, one or two million, that's a significant percentage of the controllable cost, at least for the first year. You know, theoretically, contracts could be negotiated, but for the next two years, the contracts are, are baseline.
And it's fair to point out that before the 2011 referendum, we had had an administration that had a different financial philosophy than we've had since then. Yeah, go ahead, Lisa.
Mark, I also just want to set expectations, too, that Dr. Lechner had gone ahead and told us that when there was over $4 million in cuts, many of those cuts were one-time outsourcing and kind of significant wins that may not exist when we do this review.
You can only outsource transportation once, is what you're saying.
Correct. Thank you, Mark.
And, and other, and other similar points.
Right, and I just want to, I just want to add, I just want to add to that, that so we'd cut four and a half million before the referendum. The new dollars post-referendum are just over $5 million over those last five years. Is that right, five-point? So, yeah, we're almost back to, we're just a little bit, you, you understand what I'm saying? We're just about back to where we used to be, but then we've had salary increases and stuff like that. So, we're going to do this analysis, but don't have high expectations.
Other comments?
One more.
Yep.
Thing I want to clarify. We referred to, obviously, the uncontrollables, the state spending, and Senate Bill 851, which, just so everyone knows, is a property tax increase that is expected to come back to the legislature, the Illinois General Assembly in 2018. It was on the table and wasn't dealt with. We, before this year, we are not making any assumptions in our projections for that, and fairly so, in that we made the, the choice not to assume that because we got education funding bill and a budget and felt as though Illinois was pretty much on the right track, or, not the right track, let's not, but it, moving forward and had made some decisions. So, felt safe to, and that was not part of the bill. 851 has since come up, since, you know, has come up since then. Previously, though, in two years, we had made those assumptions year over year. We had an expense line for assuming that that property tax freeze would occur. When that did not happen, what did we do with the money? So, I just want to make that note, too. There were two years that we assumed that it didn't happen, and then we spent as though we assumed it would not, and then made the assumption again and spent as though.
Those, those assumptions were only built into our projections, not into our budget.
Yeah, I don't think that's an idea.
Right, I understand that. I under, yeah.
So, the decisions were made after the fact. Once we knew
Right.
that that was not going to happen, then we made financial spending decisions based on new information. And it's been one year at a time.
And also, my point being, too, this Senate Bill 851, the latest and greatest to property tax freeze, threat or promise, however you look at it, will be hitting probably January, February, latest March. We have not made any of the spending commitments yet. So, fair enough to say we've got time to
Yes.
make those decisions based on if or when that actually happens. Correct? Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Other thoughts? Okay. This has been a robust conversation. I think one thing that is clear is that every member of the board has thought about this long and hard, and thought about it, this from very many different angles. Thank you for that conversation. Thank you, Gail, for the presentation. And now, this is time for our audience response to the 2017 levy presentation. I want to remind you that, of a couple of things. First of all, this is not a question and answer session, so as is always the practice, you're welcome to pose questions, and Dr. Lechner and/or other administration members will get back to you as soon as possible with answers to those questions. But if you pose a question at the podium, we assume it's rhetorical. No one will answer immediately. No one will answer immediately, I should say. There is also, as you may recall, a three-minute time limit. And when you come forward, I would ask that you please state your name and your community of residence. This is different from the old address standards, so you're welcome to just say Willmet if that's the case. That said, we appear to have several people making, wanting to make comments, so why don't you go ahead?
Good evening. My name is Erin Stone, and I live in Willmet. I sing in a local church choir here at a congregation in Willmet. And yesterday, we sang a song at our services about peace on earth and goodwill to all. And those ideas were also the subject of a Sunday School lesson I taught to a bunch of D-39 teenagers yesterday as well. I've been thinking about and reflecting on these ideas all day in anticipation of a potentially contentious board meeting tonight. And I, I want to stand and say that I really appreciate the diversity of opinions and perspectives on the issue of the tax levy. I truly believe that diversity of thought leads to more thoughtfulness in all of us on topics like this, and I really appreciate the board's service and considerable deliberation on this matter. I understand the feeling of being financially stretched, stretched, and having anxiety about how my personal financial obligations will be affected by the new tax bill in Congress, and how additional property taxes might stretch me even further than I already am. However, I have also been paying, I've also been paying very close attention in recent years to what's going on in D-39, including how it spends its revenue. And in my opinion, this district doesn't squander its resources. It's very wise steward, in fact, over the taxpayers' dollars. The fact is that kids need adequate resources to fund all of the incredible opportunities that D-39 offers them. My oldest child is currently in her ninth and final year in the district, and so we've seen the whole shebang almost at this point. And I have been blown away by all of the opportunities that my kids have had in this district. I support the extension of the tax levy and urge you to vote in favor of extending it. In addition to thinking about opportunities for D-39 children, I know another hot topic is instrumental music. I ask that you will keep the instrumental music programs like band and orchestra before the school day begins, so that kids can continue to have the opportunity to partake in both the instrumental music program and the current-related arts programs in grades five through eight, as they exist now. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir. It's not on right now. Could you turn on the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, perfect.
My name is Arnie Eisenberg. I'm from Willmet. I have grandchildren in the public schools. I've had children in the public schools, both in Willmet. I went to public schools. My parents went to public schools. What made this country great and continues to make this country great is the public schools. If you short-change the public schools, you go in the direction that the Secretary of Education of the, of the US government wants to go, privatize the schools, wrong direction, absolute wrong direction. If you think that's the right direction, I suggest you move to Louisiana, where your children will get the education you deserve. We, and, and we in Willmet don't even have the budget that is the dollars per children, child, that our neighboring suburbs have. We in Willmet don't even have a full-day program for, for, for kindergarten. That is not a full program for the stu, for the children of Willmet. That's a partial program for the children of Willmet. I am shocked that you chose to, to reduce the budget by four and a half million dollars, is my understanding, and instead of starting, of improving the kindergarten program. I think that is just awful, just awful. And I, and I'm confident that my neighbors are going to agree with me, because there's not one neighbor, not one legitimate neighbor in Willmet that would not pay $150, $300 for such a quality school system. There is no way, there is no way that you should consider dropping below 30%. What an embarrassment that would be. There is no way you should consider anything but the best funding for these schools, the best teachers, the best facilities. And if you don't, my neighbors will lose tens of thousands of dollars in home value. They're going to object to $300, $150, $300 tax increase. It will cost them $30,000 in their home value. That's not prudent. And I'm confident that everyone in behind me is going to say the same thing, or else they're not thinking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
Go ahead.
My name's Tom Mead. I live in Willmet. I've had three children go through District 39, and seven total through the Nutria district. Oh, sorry, I think it's on, isn't it? All right.
I'm sorry, we can't turn it up in the back at all, so go speak as well.
I'll speak as loud as I can. I said my name is Tom Mead. I live in Willmet. I moved here in 2002. I've had three children go through District 39 and seven through the Nutria district. I'm a professor at Northwestern in five departments, chemistry, biology, engineering, and a couple others. I deal with data, a lot of data. And I just first want to say, the decisions you guys make is tough, because you're saying a lot of projections and et cetera. But there were no error bars on the data you presented, which means I have no idea what your statistical analysis is. And without that, those charts aren't very, I'm not confident in them. But more importantly, when you start to think about where this money is going and how you're going to make decisions about it, each one piles on the next. That means if you raise these taxes this year, it's going to be felt for year after year after year. And I think you can do the math on that, because I know I can. So, as someone who's had as many children go through here as I have, and watched and spent my entire life in education, starting from a professor, assistant professor, all the way through, we make tough decisions. And the one thing I want to point out tonight is when you keep, or it has been stated, that somehow you cannot retain or recruit the kinds of teachers that you would need to have at this district. And that's bunk, because this is a top-flight district. And if I were coming up the road and looking at a place to move to, to teach at the K through 12 level, this would be a place I would land on. And a couple of thousand dollars either way is not going to make that decision. So, that's a straw man argument, that you say you cannot recruit or retain faculty based on their salaries. Salaries, you know, look at the median. I think that numbers speak for themselves. And finally, this point really bugs me. The majority of this board is voting with their feet and attorney's fees to lower their taxes while you raise them for us. I find that disturbing.
Thank you. What, so, once again, I'll remind you, as I reminded you at the beginning, that the policy of the board has been that we're going to ask that you not have other disruptive behavior, whether it's clapping, or cheering, or booing, or anything else. So, those of you who were with us last meeting know that I asked you not to clap in favor of Board Member Recognition Day. So, you know, we're going to try and be pretty clear on that. That was the last meeting. No, it was sometime, I don't know. You didn't get your recognition flowers? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. My name is Alan Menoff. I've lived in Willmet for over 20 years. I appreciate District 39. I had two children that went through here. They got great education, and they went on to Nutria and, and fine colleges. I will tell you, I heard all the discussion about the projection, and in my neighborhood, I know, based on recent sales, the value of houses is going down, and the taxes are going up. So, there's no need for this tax increase. Other villages, Bannockburn, turned down the opportunity to raise taxes to the maximum just because they can. It is not necessary. As a senior citizen on a fixed income, as the va, value of our property goes down and the taxes go up, you know, those lines diverge further and further apart. So, I urge the board not to increase the levy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Miles. I live in Willmet. We have heard, and I imagine we will hear, not only from Dr. Lechner, but from residents, about the other Nutria feeder schools spending more per student. They do. But the average household incomes in Winneka and Glenn Co., respectively, are $312,000 and $309,000. The average household income in Willmet is $196,000. It's 37 to 40% lower. The property value per student in Willmet is $443,000 per student. Glenn Co., by comparison, is $630,000 per student. And Winneka has 73% more property wealth. Theirs is $764,000 per student. We have a bigger middle class in Willmet than Glenn Co. and Winneka. When you raise our taxes here, it impacts us more. We have less disposable income in Willmet. We have property that's not worth as much in Willmet. And a lot of the same people who are encouraging you to raise our taxes now when it's not necessary are the same ones who want to move low-income housing into Willmet and reduce the tax base for other people while it's increasing for the rest of us. And I find that, that kind of increase in this kind of community to be untenable. We have a federal tax proposal that will make all of our state and local taxes less deductible, either not deductible at all or capped at some amount. Until we know what that impact is going to be here in Willmet and around the state of Illinois, which already has the highest property taxes in the country, and our income taxes are about to go up 32%, before we raise our levy here, which will have an impact for years and years, I'd ask you to think about what the overall impact to the residents here is going to be, because there's a lot of people leaving Illinois. And when your property taxes are higher than your mortgage, you own a liability. So, despite the claim that property values are going to go down if your property, are going to go up if your property taxes go up, that's not what the evidence tells us. The evidence tells us that when your property taxes are a higher percentage of the value of your home, people lose money. And they leave, because nobody wants to pay more in property taxes than they do in their mortgage and interest payments. I also would note that one place to look for savings might be with our teacher attendance. We have 70% of our teachers who are absent 10 days or fewer in Willmet. That means 30% are absent 10 days or more. I'm not sure what the line item is on substitutes, but that may be a place to look. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So far, everyone's done a great job of keeping under three minutes. I really appreciate that. I'm going to try and start giving people one-minute warnings just to help you time yourself. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. My name's Raquel Klippenoff. I'm a parent, a resident, and a taxpayer in Willmet District 39. And I very strongly support extending the tax levy to keep pace with inflation, as has been the practice for many years. As you know, keeping the levy the same while the cost of goods and services increase would actually be a cut to our education funding. Extending the tax levy to keep pace with inflation is simply what communities that value public education do. Nutria has already extended the levy, as well as, I believe, all other Nutria feeder districts. District 39 not only has an outstanding record in providing superior public education, but has done so while being a product, a responsible steward of our tax dollars. We have one of the lowest per-student spending rates of any of the Nutria feeder districts. It would be the height of foolishness and shortsightedness to reduce the inflation-adjusted dollars going to such an important and effective investment in our children and community. Like most residents, we chose to live in Willmet primarily because of the excellent public schools. The schools are a main reason people move and stay here. Failing to extend the levy to keep pace with inflation could seriously jeopardize the quality of public education in District 39. Furthermore, it would send a very dangerous Furthermore, it would send a very dangerous signal to potential homebuyers that our community no longer placed the highest priority on our schools. While I'm up here on a completely unrelated note, I strongly support moving band and orchestra into the school day as a related arts option. Junior high students really shouldn't have to give up an hour of sleep every single school day in order to participate in band. Okay, going back to the main, the main topic, please continue to support Wilmette's excellent public schools and extend the tax levy to keep pace with inflation.
I'm Mike Lieber, Wilmette resident, three children, in D-39, and I have no opinion on the band and orchestra. I did want to speak, and I want to speak very civilly, but I think it's important to point out that last month, one of the folks who already spoke tonight said something untruthful about me. In particular, they said that I was one of the 50 people who wrote to the board in support of the levy, and yet I had appealed my property taxes either last year or the year before. Both of those facts are false. I did, I do support the levy. I did write in support of it. But in the 10-plus years that I've lived in Wilmette, my wife and I have never appealed our property taxes. We've never hired anybody to appeal them for us. Had the folks who opposed the levy reached out to me and asked me, they would have found out that I didn't. Once I saw that they did, I took a look into it, and what turns out is that a lawyer who had been hired by somebody else here in Wilmette, who had given mistakenly my property tax ID number on my house, filed a property tax appeal for me, without my permission, without my knowledge, without my approval. Again, had they asked me, had the people opposing the levy asked me, they would have learned that that was false. But they didn't ask me. Instead, they ran ads in the Beacon, saying that I was one of 40 people who had appealed my property taxes. They've run ads on Facebook. They put petitions out, all of these, saying that I was one of the 40 people. And it's unfortunate. Again, had they asked me, they would have learned that it was simply not true. Separately, I would argue that the property tax appeal argument is a flawed one, in that simply because somebody appeals their property taxes, and again, I have never appealed my property taxes in 10-plus years here in Wilmette, but simply because somebody appeals their property taxes doesn't mean that they can also support the levy. If your property is being assessed because Cook County thinks it's got five bedrooms when it only has three, you should appeal. If your property is being taxed at a much higher rate than another, you know, a bunch of other houses on your street, you could not only support this levy, but also support paying your fair share based on the size of your house. So I don't think that those two notions go together, that you can't support the levy and yet appeal your property taxes. Again, I did not appeal my property taxes. And once I found out that I did, and then I got, you know, a few hundred-dollar reduction, I decided that I'm going to donate that reduction to the D-39 Foundation. Again, this was not anything I asked for, but it's very disconcerting that the flyer that these folks are putting out has falsehoods in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Give us just one second to reset the clock here. Technical issues? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Hello, hello? Is it working? Hello, I'm Mark Wiremuller. I live on Lawndale Street. I have appealed my property taxes. I do it every time because I want to pay less taxes. So I enjoyed the gentleman's argument before us. It made me think, maybe the people that are in favor of the levy should all pay more, and then we would pay less, because I'd like to pay less. And I'm, I don't, have no apologies about it, because I just feel like I'm overtaxed. I'm taxed way too much. So that's one solution, is everybody who's in support of the levy could pay a lot more. So I don't know if that would go over very well. Couple, I have seven quick bullet points. You said this is not going to be on Channel 6, so I wonder if it's livestreamed on YouTube right now. A lot of people are interested in watching that. A lot of board meetings in the area do do that, so it's immediately up on YouTube so people can see it. So that's my one suggestion. Moving forward, I'd like a lower tax levy. I want to pay less taxes. Can we find some ways to lower the levy, rather than just keep it the same? I want to lower the levy, lower the taxes. Illinois has a mass migration problem, so specifically in Chicago, we have 14,000 less kids in Chicago Public Schools this year. The year before, 9,000. People are leaving Chicago. People are leaving Illinois. Maybe this board could do something so people won't leave Wilmette. As you know, I'm a Realtor. I do real estate business in Chicago. I own a home here in Wilmette. My research shows that the values are stagnant here in Wilmette. We have three homes on our block on Lawndale for sale, not much activity. Someone told me one is under contract now, but they're for significantly lower prices than people were hoping for. So values are either stagnant. Some of the data you'll hear from Realtors, they'll only count MLS listings, but a lot of things are out of the MLS. A lot of people are for sale by owner, so those are lower amounts. A couple speakers alluded to the tax changes in the new tax plan, that we're not going to be able to deduct certain, it's one minute here, one minute, certain things. So that's another thing that's going to decrease property values. They always talk about cutting programs. They're always going to cut band. That's always the threat. We're going to cut band if we don't get our money. But the main thing is teacher compensation. We have to look at teacher compensation. We have to look at pensions. Maybe this board could stand up and be a frontrunner on doing something about this on the next contract, and maybe, maybe figure out some kind of way where we can still get great teachers, but less compensation. Maybe they can work more hours. I like Kathy Miles' idea of cutting back on missed days, but there's a lot of ideas here. I want to pay less taxes. I'm not embarrassed to say it. I want to keep Wilmette alive. Wilmette's going to end up going, losing a huge amount of population if we keep increasing taxes. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rob Drury. I'm a resident of Wilmette. I am also a proud graduate of District 39 Schools. I finished at Wilmette Junior High in 1997. That means I was subject to the failed levy in 1990, 1991. I distinctly remember going in third and fourth grade and having extended enrichment program at McKenzie when I was there. In fifth grade, it was not available. This is when McKenzie was still K-5. Junior High was still 6-8. Those are long days ago. I know this has a direct impact on students. I myself am a teacher in Township 203 over at District 38 in Sears. I also have a daughter who'll be entering Ramona in the fall. I have a PhD in reading education as well. All of the research I've ever seen on levies and all the day-to-day livings that I know from living here, both in central Ohio, any school that ever failed to pass a levy ends up having a short-term gain and a long-term nadir in terms of the quality of the students that they enroll, in terms of the quality of teachers that they can attract. A lot of the arguments we've heard tonight really are focused more on property taxes, which I understand are important. Again, I myself am a homeowner, homeowner in the area. However, there's a lot that goes into the value of a home besides the quality of the schools in the town that it feeds into. There are numerous things. Again, we had a person here talking about this from Realtor's point of view, who left all that information out. So as someone who is, again, a proud graduate of District 39, of Township 203, who came back to the area expressly to attend Wilmette schools so my daughter could go there, have the same experience that I did, I encourage you to support the levy. You have my unequivocal support for the levy itself. I will gladly be taxed more in the case of people who do not want to be taxed at all. I think it is childish to even put that argument forward, to say that someone would not want to be taxed. I don't quite understand that someone could fail to understand how taxes work as being an adult. So again, I do, you do have my full support for the levy. Please tax me into oblivion. Our kids deserve it. I completely understand. This is someone who lives and breathes in education every day, and has dedicated my life to it as someone who's earned a PhD in the field. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Feliz Navidad. My name is Jasmine Howzer, and I'm a resident, taxpayer, parent, niece, I'm sorry, not niece, aunt, of here in District 39. Have children that have gone through here, nieces, nephews, and godchild. Thank you so much. I'm so glad we're doing this, Dr. Lechner, that we get to have this conversation and get to hear from you. I was struck by something you said earlier about the uncertainty of coming up with, you know, projections for budget. And I also learned something new, thanks to Tracy and all her questions about SB 851 and others. But as far as the uncertainty goes, because of the assessments and all of that, I think we can both, we can chew gum and walk at the same time. In addition to working on all that you do here, I know there's a legislative, we have a say-down, we can have some sort of a push-down in Springfield. It's to say, rather than with SB 851, rather than, than freeze it, why don't we cap it at 1% of our assessed values of our home? Because our home values have shrunk. I know ours have taken a bit of a hit. I appreciate what Kathy Miles said about us being a middle-income comparable to the feeder districts. We are a middle-income community compared to the others, Winneka, Glenco. And any increase in taxes does hurt the disposable income that Kathy Miles was talking about, so I appreciate that. I would also encourage the board to not increase this levy until you can really come back to the community and say, you know what? We're not going to negotiate a contract that's going to go up to 5%, 6%, rather, you know, CPI plus a little bit more, because, you know what? Us in the private sector, we don't get those kind of increases guaranteed all the time at 5% to 6% of our household income or of our salary. So I would encourage that, working with SB 851 and, down in Springfield, and also property tax cap instead of property tax freeze, and also the salary contract, really negotiating that, no more than maybe 3%. I mean, it would be good to hear that. And I would also like to say to Mr. Arnie Eisenberg, we are thinking, and we are legitimate neighbors here, so if he'd like to talk later, I'd love to. Oh, kindergarten all day. I used to go to Ramona, I mean, not Ramona, Avoca School District. They had kindergarten all day. I tell you, my children were not hurt when we came to District 39, and there was no kindergarten all day. They are doing wonderfully. There, I don't see that there's a big need for kindergarten all day. And they didn't play in orchestra and band, and we didn't mind coming to the early morning. Maybe one daughter did, but not the others. Thanks so much, and good night.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Marshall. I live in Wilmette. My three sons all went through District 39, and my family is very grateful for the education they received in the district. And I come here tonight to speak in favor of the levy as presented. I think it's very reasonable. Keeping up with inflation is something that we absolutely need to do for our schools. I appreciate that the district has been highly responsible with its finances, keeping us with the lowest per pupil spending of the Nutria feeder districts, making sure that the administration, or pupil-to-administrator ratio is kept to the lowest, and the pupil-to-teacher ratio is also at the most reasonable within the district, the most responsible. In addition to the importance of the education for our children, even though I no longer have children in the district, I care about my neighbors' children. I care about the children in the community, and I want them to have the same first-rate education that my children have. Quite selfishly, I want my property values to stay up. The surest way to hurt my property values would be to cut spending on our public schools. We need to keep up with inflation to have quality education. We need to keep up with inflation for the good of the property values of the community. We need to keep up with inflation for the good of all the children in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Beatty-Riedel, and I'm a resident of Wilmette. I want to start by thanking the board and all of our administrators for their hard work and support of our schools. Wilmette is a thriving community because of our schools. However, recently, misinformed statements are being circulated via paid advertisements, newspaper op-eds, and a few candidates who have run for local office, including one school board member. The first misinformed statement that I would like to address is that property values are down in Wilmette, and therefore, property taxes should not increase. One should be suspicious of the measurement period starting point, which is typically the housing bubble peak. However, even that is largely irrelevant. If appraised values skyrocket at 20% today, would school funding also skyrocket? Of course not. Simply put, local governments determine the tax revenue needed from community to meet expenses, as we've heard described tonight. The tax incidence is then allocated based on the property values relative to one another. For example, we could uniformly increase everyone's appraisal by 10%, and it would not alter the amount of anyone's tax due, as the rate would simply adjust to the required revenue. The overall change in the village's residential appraised property values is an unhelpful comparison in determining spending. As an intellectual honesty check, inquire if those now seeking reductions push for sizable local government spending increases in the housing bubble run-up. The second misinformed statement that I would like to address, because property values are done, down, we have less wherewithal to pay taxes. Property taxes are based on semi-annual cash flow. Typically, you would not sell a portion of your house to pay property taxes. Therefore, the more relevant criteria of lessened ability to pay would be decreased incomes or increased joblessness, and not the community's total appraised values. Third misinformed statement, the school budget should not increase more than inflation. The CPI is an average of price increases in goods and services. Goods and services that can be produced with significant productivity gains, through economies of scale, for example, increase less than the CPI. However, quality education is highly labor-intensive and hard to mass-produce. Think of 40 kids in a classroom versus 20. Therefore, it is unwise to place a CPI ceiling on it. Determining school spending should not be a back-of-the-envelope exercise. Misinformed statement number four, those who appealed their property tax appraisals should be discredited from defending the school budget. If one pays excess payroll taxes and has that corrected, does that mean that she forfeits the right to defend Social Security from benefit cuts? That seems to be a flawed logic. Why would ensuring accurate payment imply you can't support public services? If there is an argument for changing the appeal process to ensure better equity, that's great, but that's a different topic altogether. Therefore, I thank you and support extending the tax levy.
Please, no clapping. Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Beth Feely. I'm a resident of Wilmette with three children who are in or who have gone through the Wilmette Public School System. I also went through the Wilmette Public Schools. I'm a proud graduate, and I chose to come back here to raise my family, as I love so many aspects about this community, and I wanted to send my kids through the same schools that I went to. But tonight, I ask that you not extend the levy. First, you are projecting a declining student population over the next five years. If anything, to me, that would signal that you'd need less money and not more. Also, since 2008, the money that you've received from Wilmette residents has outpaced CPI by a factor of three. So the levy is not keeping pace with inflation. It is outpacing it. And one wonders how many Wilmette residents can say that their pay has outpaced inflation over the last nine years. Also, Illinois is leading the nation in outmigration. You've heard that earlier. People leaving name high taxes as the number-one reason. As the recipient of the largest portion of our property tax bill, you, the school district and board, can be a leader in reducing residents' tax burden while maintaining educational excellence. Other suburbs are doing this. Our schools are great because of the partnership between the teachers, and the parents, and the students. And that partnership is what will keep our schools great. You being a part of the solution to the crushing tax burden in this state can be a positive step in keeping people here and turning the tide of ever-rising taxes that we see year after year after year. And higher taxes do not draw people here. They drive them away. As president of Nutria Neighbors, a group that has worked to raise awareness about the levy and other issues among residents, we have heard from hundreds of people who ask that you not extend this unnecessary $2 million levy. We sent an updated version of the petition to you this evening, and I also have paper copies. Okay, I can hand those up one at a time? Okay, great. And so we present nearly 500 signees to this petition to send the message that residents don't want this levy. Also, Nutria Neighbors is a grassroots group funded by residents of the area, and we promote the ideas of common sense, free enterprise, and the golden rule. Yesterday, two people from the community, who apparently did not want us to be circulating these petitions, verbally attacked and shoved some Nutria Neighbors volunteers, including a teenage student, who were gathering signatures outside a jewel store. These individuals acted like thugs, making various preposterous claims that Nutria Neighbors is a concerted effort by outside dark money to ruin Wilmette schools. One minute? I'm sorry?
If you stop here three minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's part of the problem. Let's make this part of a solution, and I just hope that you'll consider the viewpoints of residents who think that public education is great, we send our kids to the schools, but we live within limited means. We hope you will recognize that and live within yours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
Hello, I'm John Flanagan. I'm a Willmet resident, and I want to make first a general comment in reply to Mark Weiermuller. Willmet is going to be fine. And now a specific point I want to address. A friend actually sent me a news item from Nutria Neighbors highlighting a decision by the Bannockburn Board of Education to reduce taxes. And I think it was mentioned earlier here tonight in reference to Bannockburn. I wanted to figure out how they did it, so I went and looked at the figures. The most recent available information on Bannockburn District 106 has an enrollment of 175 students, which is 5% of Willmet District 39's 3,567. Perhaps more important is that the EAV per pupil is $1,230,000 compared to Willmet's $442,000. And I think that because of the property tax base in Bannockburn, they've been able to accumulate operating fund reserves of $11.7 million, or 184% of their annual operating budget, which is one year and nine months of operations. Here in Willmet, of course, we have something closer to 50% fund reserves, or six months of our operating budget. The ratio of EAV per pupil, Bannockburn to Willmet, is 2.8 times Willmet. Operating spending per pupil, 1.6. Property tax per pupil, 2.4 times. I think the key here is that in Bannockburn, they've been able to collect taxes 140% to 150% above their operating expense requirements. Obviously, that is not the case here in Willmet, where we actually receive only 94% of what it costs to educate a pupil in our district in one year. So I just think we need to be very careful, and I encourage Nutria Neighbors to present the proper context for these comparisons. And I would also note, as a person who had some experience on the school board, the belt here is already pretty tight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Tim Sherman from Willmet, also a former board member. I want to encourage the board to pass the levy, just as it is, and I want to thank you all for your service, knowing what this meeting's like. And by "this" meeting, I mean, yeah, the levy, but it's also the calendar. I hated the calendar. Everyone loves to argue about the calendar, over and over. Several people before me have said some things about the numbers here, and what numbers we're playing with. There was a blonde woman before me who talked about intellectual honesty. That's what I want to talk about. This is a school district. We teach our students in this school district and beyond in Nutria to make arguments that are valid, with real evidence, using numbers not to sort of hide things, but to reveal them, to make things clear. Things like basing your projection on the real estate bubble of '09, you know, that's pretty unfair. There's been a lot of talk about, there's been a lot of talk about the, those who have been caught appealing their taxes right here at the desk. As a person who sat there, I'll admit it, I've done that, I did it this year. And I have my letter here, I just got it, from Robert Rosenfeld. I saved $920 on my taxes, which, I guess, a third of that goes to District 39, or would have gone to District 39. But if you take that $300 or so and divide it over all the taxing bodies to be taxed here, it ends up being about 2 cents per person, or per taxed body. I'll give anyone my 2 cents. But, of course, you guys, say you do eight years like I did, say 10 hours every week, 40 hours a month, do eight years, multiply that times, I don't know, my carpenter's salary of 50 bucks an hour comes out to $192,000. I don't think you guys should be questioned so easily as being irresponsible with our money. I think you do great work, and you do it for nothing. Thanks.
Thank you. It's not on yet. Try again. Nope, not on yet. No, you need to turn on the switch.
Okay, great. Good evening, my name is Betsy Hart. I live in Willmet. Thank you for your service, and certainly no one is questioning your commitment to the well-being of our schools. I am concerned about the tenor of some of the comments tonight suggesting that those who dare to question the status quo are not thinking, are not, it's not possible to think that wisely. I question that, and I particularly am disappointed with Mr. Lieber's comments, because as Mr. Lieber knows from our discussion earlier this week, that we never named Mr. Lieber or anyone else. That was a news organization, his issues with the news organization. That news organization ironically was used as the source for an article in the Wall Street Journal today, but that's a side note. But his issue is with them, like the board and like us, we are not affiliated with them. But what's interesting is, to me, is that for those who insist on tearing down this particular news organization, it seems to me they can't have it both ways. Either striving to lower your tax assessment while working to raise your neighbors isn't hypocritical, or it is. And if it's not, then it's no big deal, forget about it. But when Mr. Lieber contacted us at Nutria Neighbors, we very specifically made the change immediately. All we did was have the number, it was 40 out of 50. We changed it here, in what he was holding, to 39 out of 50. We tried to change it in an ad, it was too late, and Mr. Lieber thanked us for our promptness to the one thing that we did do, which was simply use larger numbers. What I'm concerned about is the, what I increasingly see is a lack of civility in the community and assuming best intentions in others, and I think there might be a way to address it. And, or a question about assessing or addressing the status quo and challenging it. We at Nutria Neighbors have encountered this too often. And I believe that D-39 can help set a new standard. They can do this by adopting a very positive example set by the Village of Willmet to encourage civil dialogue. They appointed a citizen committee to investigate the minimum wage issue. We should do the same when it comes to the $2 million tax increase. Why? Because on Wednesday, President Trump is set to sign tax reform that in the short term will be financially jarring, even devastating to the citizens of the state, and especially the citizens of Willmet. How can we possibly make a binding, long-term decision when we simply do not have the information of how that's going to impact us? Several of us tonight proposed that the board do exactly that for the proposed tax increase. This means actually convening a citizen committee to study the issue, in the meantime, either lower the levy, or do not impose it for the year ahead. You've talked a lot about the ability, if needed, to make those, to make adjustments. Go ahead, and let's practice this year, get the information, and figure out how best to proceed. Let's not make a decision that's irrevocable when we do not have crucial information of how this will impact our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Give us just a moment to reset the clock, if you don't mind.
Is this on? Okay, great.
It is on, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Richard Huzek. Thank you all for your service, whatever your views may be on this. I also celebrate civil discourse, because democracy works best at this level. I am, I went through Logan School, now known as Mackenzie. I've been living in the Mackenzie District now for more than 30 years. Our kids are out of the district for more than 10 years, and we want to stay in our home. We are concerned about affordability, but we're also very concerned about the amenities and enrichment that the schools provide to our community. And I don't defend the system of financing public education in Illinois, which makes a Rube Goldberg invention look like a creation of elegant simplicity. That's not something that this board can fix. You're stuck with the system the way it is, and you have to deal with financing, given the constraints that you've got under the tax cap law and everything else. I do speak in favor of the proposed levy, and that is because I believe that my priority is for the board to try and keep its operating fund balances, as a percentage of annual expenditures, as high as possible, as long as possible. And I think that by proposing a levy that is less than the rate of increase in inflation and new property growth would have negative compounding effects, leaving aside any precipitous negative adverse revenue that might be caused by a property tax freeze or something like that. If you reduce the levy below what you're allowed under the tax cap law, that's going to have serious compounding effects year after year. They're going to put those fund balances to the point that there will be a precipitous and worrisome decline in your ability to maintain those balances. And I'm going to say this probably more than once, I do not want to see another referendum anytime soon, if at all. I think the board has taken very seriously the prospect that the voters in this community would not vote for another referendum increase, and it has taken very seriously since the last referendum, its responsibility to husband the limited resources that it has to, including changes in the way that it provides for teacher compensation. It's easy to say in the abstract that spending should be cut without getting into specifics. I know that's easier said than done, and I think the board has done a very serious job conscientiously, trying to look at where spending should be limited. And certainly, if there is a major negative effect on revenues, I trust that the board is going to do what it must in those circumstances, including perhaps for a year more, not increasing teacher salaries above the rate of inflation on average. I could go into more detail, but that's the board's responsibility, and it seems to be doing a prudent and responsible job in that regard. I have no problems about contesting my property taxes, I've done that in the past. I don't see that as inconsistent. The people who threaten outmigration seem to be staying here, so let's just call that a wash.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Stacy Worley, and I live in Willmet. First of all, I want to thank each and every one of you. I'm really thankful for your service to this community. I know it is a big commitment, as somebody else mentioned. So when I was thinking today about which angle, what I wanted to discuss, the one thing I thought about was discussing cost reduction, spending reduction. I do, I'm confused, I'm still confused, because I know that, I think you're asking for 4.36%, and the CPI is 2.1%. So why not ask for 2.1%? I'm going to say a dirty word, maybe there's a compromise in there that can be had? Because initially, I wrote, I want to express that I oppose increasing the tax burden at all, but cost of living, I see where that needs to be made. I understand that this is a complex process, and there are a lot of moving parts. I've attended the last few board meetings and two of your committee meetings, really to just listen and learn about how our schools are run and how the levy is extended, because I think it is a complicated process. In my opinion, the one piece that seems to be missing is a discussion about spending reform, which I alluded to earlier, i.e., living within your means. Considering the financial condition of Illinois, now more than ever, we need to work together and figure out ways to become more efficient. For example, just like the district-wide PTO, maybe a representative from each taxing entity could come together to discuss ideas about ways and best practices on reducing cost. It's just an idea. We need to balance the tax dollars we are given while maintaining educational excellence. To be clear, I am not for cutting programs. I just haven't heard anybody speak about the cost side and opportunities to reduce expenses. I believe there must be an opportunity on the administrative side that can be had, that would not impact our current amazing educational programs. Again, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Hello? Hi, I'm Danielle Mergner, and I live in Willmet. I too went to Mackenzie School when Louise Mackenzie was the principal, and my son graduated from District 39. I kind of wanted to springboard off what Stacy said. I was going to address spending, too. First of all, thank you for all the work you do for us, and it sounds like you guys have really been thinking critically and having a robust discussion. I too support our schools. But what I don't hear is the discussion on the cost side and spending. I heard you say you're going to have that discussion, but it seems to me then we're only looking at half the picture when you ask for the levy. I would like to see a whole analysis of the spending side as well as the revenue side. And I heard Ray say that there isn't a lot of room to cut, but I'd like you guys to think outside the box. What about talking to the other districts and see what best practices are? What about seeing where our administration is duplicative, where we could have some economies of scales by coordinating with other people? I think we really do need to think outside the box, because I hear that the library's now looking at an increase in taxes, and the village is considering an increase in taxes, and there really is only so much you can, the voters can tolerate. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dr. Carl Hopman. I live in Willmet, District 39. I would first like to thank the board for all their hard work. I have two requests. My main request is that the school district allow parents to get a better idea of what is happening inside the classroom. Let me explain. When we bought our house in Willmet, we intended to register our three daughters to public school. Since their education is our most precious concern, we wanted to check the school. On the advice from a friendly principal from Wisconsin, we asked to observe a class. The principal of Central Elementary School told us that it was a very unusual demand, and that I would need approval of the superintendent. I then called the superintendent, who told me that if he were to allow me, there would be flooded by demands from parents. You will note the irony between the two objections I received. On the one hand, that is unusual; on the other hand, it is so common as to overwhelm the system. I want to highlight that allowing first-time parents to observe a class is a default at all private schools. Even at public schools, it is usually the default, and not only in Wisconsin. It is also the case just south of Willmet, in Arlington-Evanston, and just north in Kennelworth. I have since been given other various explanations for this policy. One is on the ground of privacy. However, the Supreme Court of the United States, in its 2002 decision, Oasov of Sefalvo, confirmed that there should be no privacy expectation in a public school. Indeed, all your unchosen classmates observe what you do much more intrusively than any parent observer could do. Another reason I was given was to avoid teacher shopping. However, what's wrong with teacher shopping? If there is a poor teacher whom no one wants, then he or she should not be teaching our children. If all the teachers are good but in different styles, then parents would simply try and find a teacher who fits their kid's style. Of course, some requests might not possibly be accommodated, but at least as much as possible. This is, again, the default at private schools. In fact, this no-observation policy seems to have been designed mainly, if not only, to protect fully performing teachers. Our tax dollars pay the district a lot. You would expect that parents have the right to know what is going on inside the classroom. The school district should be accountable to parents and taxpayers. How can there be checks and balances if we do not even know what is going on inside the classroom? By the way, I understand that if you insist, you have the right to observe your own child's classroom, but that is so much more disruptive than having a stranger come in. Imagine the kids question, "Hey, John, your dad was there. What's wrong with you? What's wrong with your dad?" How many parents actually have the courage to shame their kids in this way in a given year in each classroom? All of them? 10 of them? One of them? Maybe even fewer? Of course, some requests might not possibly be accommodated, but at least as much as possible. This is again the default at private schools. In fact, this no-observation policy seems to have been designed mainly, if not only, to protect fully performing teachers. Our tax dollars pay the district a lot. You would expect that parents have the right to know what is going on inside the classroom. The school district should be accountable to parents and taxpayers. How can there be checks and balances if we do not even know what is going on inside the classroom? By the way, I understand that if you insist, you have the right to observe your own child's classroom, but that is so much more disruptive than having a stranger come in. Imagine the kids question, "Hey, John, your dad was there. What's wrong with you? What's wrong with your dad?" How many parents actually have the courage to shame their kids in this way in a given year in each classroom? All of them? 10 of them? One of them? Maybe even fewer. My second request is to reduce the tax levy. The average salary of a District 39 is $85,000. This compared to average salaries for teachers in private North Shore schools of about $60,000. Instead of asking for an increased levy, why don't we ask for a general salary reduction of about 20%?
Excuse me.
This would keep, I'm nearly done. This would keep the district 15% above the fair market. It would also partly offset the increase in our property taxes that result from the elimination of the federal deduction.
Sir, can I ask you to stop?
Property tax rates in Illinois are the highest in the nation at 2.7% ahead of New York, and more than double the median at 1.2%.
Your time is up.
Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Annabelle Wirick, and I live in Willmett, and I went through the District 39 schools. And I want to speak about the comments made about the petition. I went to Juilliard yesterday and saw what was going on, and I had a discussion with one of the teens. And when I asked about what the levy would actually mean, because I just came back from college and have no idea what is going on, but basically, he told me that it was to increase taxes so that third graders could get swivel chairs so that their backs don't hurt. I found that statement pretty ridiculous, and after talking to him some more, he ended our conversation by saying that he was just fulfilling a poli-si requirement. I think that's awesome, because I fulfilled that same requirement in high school my senior year, but I also thought that he was giving people false information and withholding actual facts. And based on the things that I saw that day, I would question the legitimacy of this petition. And also, in thinking about the comment made about bullying and pushing those kids around, that makes me really upset, and I don't want to say a he should, she said thing, but I could say that I saw the same acts made by people who were supporting the petition. I just want to say that I loved my experience at District 39, and I had a great time, and cutting anything or withholding money would just be a bummer for me and for people who would go through this again, so thank you.
Thank you. Just a sec, off.
On.
Give us a second.
I want to thank you.
Hang on, just a second. Let us reset. Okay, go ahead.
My name is Leslie Wirick. As many of you in this room know, I live at 1018 Elmwood, because you published my name and address.
Leslie.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I just have to respond to this comment about bullying. I have seen the same man approach this board twice and call you hypocrites. I object to that. You are all unpaid volunteers. I truly believe that you are at this table to do the best for our children, every single one of you, and this community, and I appreciate what you do. And I want to see the civil discourse, the two commentators said, come back into this room, and between all of us. Local government is about different views. It's not about political ideology. It's about nonpartisan leadership. You might be fiscally conservative, you might be socially liberal, but you're coming together around this table to come to the best decision for our community. The fake news that I'm seeing telling alternative facts, two of the people from Newtrea Neighbors said they have nothing to do with it yet. It's on the homepage of their website. The article that listed my name and address for daring to write a letter supporting my school board is a link from their homepage. So if they're going to talk about those kind of scare tactics and bullying, they need to take that stuff off of their webpage. And really, we can disagree all the time about these things. We don't need outside organizations injecting their influence and their political ideology. We're going to disagree enough. We don't need that stuff here. So I trust you guys to make the right decision, and I support the levy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Ford. I'll share with you my two cents. My gut feeling is some of this has been done in a vacuum, and I think that was kind of exchanged among some of you board members, you great board members who so kindly volunteer your time on the residents' behalf, but expenses, I later heard after some debate, would be looked at in the months to come. The data, well, the PhD who talked about being taxed into oblivion happily, I disagree with, and I would challenge anybody else in this room to agree that we would want to be taxed into oblivion. Because the levy is there doesn't mean we have to grab it. I think, and for someone to say, if it were to go to a referendum, it would never get passed, again, I think some of this is done in a vacuum. And while I think District 39 is fabulous, pencils have to be taken out, as someone eloquently said earlier, sharpened, and really take a look at costs. Do I have a one-minute warning? Is that what that was? Okay. So I think, you know, I'll end with the professor from Northwestern who said, and I totally agree, I looked at this document for the first time tonight and saw the bar graphs, and I just don't think it was, with all due respect, Gail, you did a great job, but I don't think it was as thought out for what we're spending and what you're asking for with the levy as it could be and should be. And I really ask you to take a hard look at not extending this levy. And going back to the drawing board, and if it's necessary, take it to the village, and don't operate in a vacuum. Those are my two cents, and that PhD is the only one in this room who wants to be taxed into oblivion, and I say that with respect, but I think it's important to note, we live in the most corrupt state, the most corrupt county, the most corrupt city, but a wonderful village, and I want to keep it that way. I've lived here all my life, and I love it. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public who would like to come forward and speak at this time?
On or off? Okay. It's kind of a...
Sorry, please state your name.
Tom Scanlon, Willmett. And this is kind of like deja vu. I wasn't really thinking about talking about anything tonight, I was just going to listen. But I recall, three years ago, I was the last person who spoke at the Willmett Park District referendum, and it was very similar in terms of the quantity of people at that meeting. I don't think I've been to a library meeting, a village board meeting, or one of your meetings, or a park district meeting, where I've seen this many people since, three years ago at the Willmett Park District meeting. And this is, you know, you should be impressed with the amount of Willmett residents that are here. And at the end of the meeting, which last person to talk to, I was up there, and then you guys, you know, were basically going to adjourn and do your vote, and that's what, and you're going to do the same thing. And the last, one of the board members said to me, and I said, you know, that most people here were against the referendum for both Langen and Gilson, and the woman said, "Well, Tom, let me think about this, because I know a lot of people who are for it, and we're not going, you know, and so we're going to have, this isn't really representative of the community." Well, I think tonight was representative, and just like I told them three years ago, that was representative, and they got, and you know the results, the referendum was defeated. Well, here tonight, it's like 50/50. So what I, you know, we're pretty darn close. So what I'm saying is, you know, keep in mind what happened from the board, now the Park District Board, now they very well listen to the community. They do surveys, and they don't always listen to the management as much as they did, because the management wasn't, you know, they're not perfect, and as they said, as they said, you know, on all the issues that they were talking about for passing or for the referendum, ended up being not correct. And at the end of the day, it's good to listen to the community and have that transparency that everyone here talked about tonight. So like I said, it's a, very ironic that it's three years ago, and very similar.
Thank you. Someone else like to speak? Come forward.
Okay, hi, my name is Avita Vulgaris, and I'm actually here to speak later, so these are off-the-cuff remarks. First of all, thank you all for the work that you do, and after listening to the arguments, I'm for the tax levy. I should also add that, you know, we're very, we have two children at Central, and we're very happy with the school and the programs, but we started out at St. Francis for the, because full-day kindergarten, and we push our kids pretty hard in math. And there, I remember, the school paid for an online math program, and when we came to Central, we suggested it to like two or three teachers, and they all told us that if it's not free, they can't even consider it. And to me, that just doesn't seem right. I mean, it doesn't seem like it even costs that much. So I don't think cost is, should really be the bottom line in everything. You know, what we really want is a very good education, and, you know, tax levy, you know, we pay more taxes, if that's what we have to do. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan O'Brien. I'm from Willmett. I have two children that are currently in D-39. Just want to thank you all for your service to the community. I support the extension of the tax levy. My wife and I, we moved here four years ago specifically for the schools, the quality schools, and seeing these charts and these projections tonight, if the levy's not extended and there's a property tax freeze and the revenues fall, I mean, there's going to be cuts. I don't see how you get around that, and that's really going to hurt the quality education that we came here for, that lots of people have come here for. I was just talking to a Realtor friend last week, and the one comment thing that he said, that everyone who's looking for a house here in Willmett, schools, that's the first thing on their mind, and that's why we're here. And so I would encourage you all tonight to please extend the levy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jeff Axelbrand. I'll keep it brief. I just want to thank you all for your service and say that I support the tax levy, and there's no problem. I want to protect my property values, and I care about our students. If the schools become underfunded, I'm afraid that our property values would actually go down. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Heiser. I'm a resident of Willmett, and I have two children currently in D-39, one of whom I had the opportunity to enjoy in her first orchestra concert this evening. It's pretty awesome. It's pretty great that we're able to fund programs like that for our children to keep arts in the school. Incidentally, she's also a type 1 diabetic. She benefits directly from the exceptional nursing care that exists in this school district that doesn't exist in most districts in the state, or is offered only on a provisional rotating by-school basis. So I thank you for making those kinds of programs and services that are really apropos to offering a complete educational service to the community available to our kids. That's, I think, the big point here, and what we're losing in this, you know, argument around expense, around revenue, around trying to nail down squishy numbers that we don't know and that are influenced by a bunch of other things. And so what I ask the board is please extend the levy. When all else fails, we need to err on the side of investing in our children. When all else fails, and we don't know everything we wish we could know in a particular moment, we err on the side of solvency, right? And we play the game forward. That's the fiscally responsible thing to do. That is the socially conservative thing to do, right? Not to cut taxes. We're in a point in time where, listening to these, some of the speakers we had today, you'd be excused to wonder if we're living in Detroit or Gary, given the, you know, mass swaths of blight and outmigration that's occurring. That's not happening. Willmett is an incredibly desirable community to live in. We relocated here from Portland, Oregon, five and a half years ago. We were very much talked into Willmett and talked into going above what our original coming-in budget was, so that we could get access to the schools and the amenities that this community has to offer. That's not going to change. So I want to say, again, chasing a nickel of tax save today at the expense of the potential return, you know, of a dollar on our kids and our housing values in the future, it just doesn't seem to make good sense. Short-term gain for long-term risk is never a trade-off that I think we should make when it's our children's future, right, and our community that hang in the balance. Thank you, and please extend the levy.
Thank you. Please use the microphone when this is recorded, and don't forget to state your name and community of residence. Thank you. I'm sorry, the microphone isn't on. You have to turn on the switch.
I came out tonight in support of the tax levy.
I'm sorry.
District?
We need your name, no, it's on, but we need your name and community of residence.
My name is Elizabeth McCullough, and I have been a Willmett resident for the last four and a half years. I do not have children in the school district, but I am in favor of the tax levy, because I am in support of quality public schools. And I just want to say that I appreciate the chance to talk tonight and to thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have other members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Okay. Seeing none, I request a motion to adjourn back to our regular meeting.
I move to adjourn back to the regular meeting of Monday, December 18th.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Okay. Then the motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to the regular Board of Education meeting. Actually, I'm going to suggest that we take about a three-minute or so break, so that we can get all of our board members back, and we'll just come back in just a minute and read adjourn then. Yeah, go for it.
Somebody wants to do it, they're out.
I actually could have walked faster than, I drove because I thought we might go home really early, and I wanted to go. But I ended up parking halfway home.
I saw all the days except for people come here at 6:30. So I figured, so I got here at 6:30.
I got here at 6:36, and it's like, no.
Okay, we're going to get going.
Ellis should be back in one second.
I don't think so. Okay. Let's see, I have to find my place here.
Hmm?
Okay.
So I might be fast.
We'd like to adjourn, reopen the regular meeting, and would the clerk please call the roll? Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Okay, thank you. It's time for board reports. The first reports are the committee reports, and our first committee report is facilities development, which Ms. Chaff has.
Yes, that's me. The Facilities Development Committee was held at 8:00 AM on Thursday, December 11th, 2017, at the McHaleian Education Center. There were two major topics of conversation. The first topic was the high crest construction update in preparation to solicit bids. In January, Sandra Moon of STR Architects presented architectural drawings showing more technical progress and details of the high crest construction. She said the Park District had approved the plans and STR would next talk with the village. Conversation ensued about cost and cost containment. Mr. Papa Nicholas, our construction manager, said that within the next few weeks, he will have a better idea of expenses and how the preliminary budgets are shaping up. The timeline for the project was also reviewed and we expect to look at bids at the February 2018 Board of Education meeting. The second topic of conversation was kindergarten enrichment and facility needs. As a part of the strategic plan, this is the first step in exploring how we might implement a kindergarten enrichment program in the district. The administration and STR Architects looked at space needs for all four elementary schools and presented very initial ideas for renovation and additions at each elementary school, which would be needed to accommodate a kindergarten enrichment program. Next steps include an analysis of program operating costs such as salaries, surveys of parents to gauge interest in a district-sponsored enrichment program, and the possibility of offering the program in a budget-neutral fashion. The final report will be presented when the analysis is complete in the spring. The next Facilities Development Committee meeting will be held here at the MEC on January 8th, 2018, at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Next up is our School Finance Committee, Mr. Penzica.
The Finance Committee also met on December 11, 2017, as part of the committee of the whole. We spent a lot of time on topics that are later on in tonight's agenda. In specific, we spent time, a specific, we spent a significant amount of time on the annual levy, as you might guess. We discussed the baseline budget projections that are based on regular practices of the board and approving the inflation-based levy increase. We then discussed scenarios with the levy being frozen, either by our actions and/or by future state actions. We discussed short and long-term implications of these scenarios. We also discussed several other items that will be discussed in more detail at tonight's meeting. One, student fees, which essentially remain unchanged from last year. Two, the fiscal year 2019 budget calendar, which is a year-long timeline to bring up budget issues with time for discussion and action while meeting statutory dates. Three, the fact that there are residential and commercial property tax assessment appeals, which again will be discussed later. Four, a discussion on how the district has been containing excess pension payments also will be discussed later. Under new business, several school board members highlighted an interest in delving deeper into the district's costs. While managed, reviewed, and audited each year, a deep dive has not been done since the referendum. Everyone agreed to add this as an action item for the next year. Also, the topic of the reserve was asked to be added as an action item. What are the risks that impact the required reserve? Setting the board's guidelines for a target reserve range and defining what is too high, as well as what is too low of a reserve? We'll meet again in February. January? January.
Okay, those are the committee reports. Actually, there is one more. We had a committee of the whole meeting, and during the committee of the whole meeting, we discussed our written communications policies and norms for the board. The discussion did not come to conclusion, but I will point out that our current practice is that when we receive a written communication, either the board president or the board secretary, which is also the superintendent, responds. We do try to respond as quickly as possible to every written communication, one or the other or both of us. We respond on behalf of the board. Individual board members also may or may not choose to respond. They are aware that we, that they have someone responding on behalf of the board. And this topic, we will continue to discuss. It does get tied up in things like the Open Meeting Act and also our norms around the voice of the board and the board speaking with one voice. So there will be more on that in the future, and I suspect we will discuss that again at our January 8th Committee of the Whole meeting. So it's a little ad hoc committee report bonus tonight. Next comes the liaison reports, and this is going to be Ms. Kearney with, first of all, the Community Review Committee.
Nope, that's not me. I'm Ed Foundation. I was just at the Ed Foundation Wednesday.
So we have two Ed Foundations, and do we, do we have anybody on the CRC?
I actually did go to CRC a month ago. Yes, you're absolutely right, and I'm not prepared for that. I was thinking that was the last meeting.
Tell you what.
But I can tell you, I can quickly jog. The committee is looking, is focusing on personalized learning and what that means to District 39, and has broken up into subgroups to research that, and literally, that's where they were at. That wasn't even off the cuff, it's really true. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
And then we have Ed Foundation, and I.
I think there have been two meetings, I think there have been two meetings since our last board meeting.
All right, why don't you give us the first quick update?
It may be what Tracy's going to say.
Great.
So, okay. So, the Ed Foundation asked me to report that they had a busy first half of the year. They had two successful community fundraising events, the Fourth Annual Attire to Inspire Fashion Show and the Family Bingo Night. Science Olympiad classes are underway and will run until February 9th. The Foundation is also hosting the next trivia night on February 3rd at the Masonic Lodge. And lastly, six GRIP grants were approved for the fall 2017 grant cycle. Total of $11,134 was gifted back to District 39 schools, and the next application deadline is March 2nd, 2018. The next foundational meeting will be Wednesday, January 17th, at 7:00 PM. Tracy, is there something else from the last meeting then?
Couple more things.
Okay.
The annual appeal, they just should, just hit the mail. They were actually stuffing envelopes that night. Remember, annual appeal is an outreach for contributions to the Ed Foundation. Ed Foundation is highly supportive of District 39 teachers and curriculum. Thank you in advance for your work, Education Foundation. I'm thrown here now. I'm trying to jump around and see what. Trivia night is Saturday, February 3rd at the Masonic Lodge. Update to that is online registration opens January 11th at 10:00 AM. Foundation would like to remind everyone to act quickly, not to delay. This event sounds like fast, sells out fast, like within minutes, based on last year and the year before and the year before that. And then finally, we enjoyed a short video providing an update regarding the Google Chromebook pilot that's currently underway at Central that was made available through funds from GRIP grant from the Education Foundation. Video reported the pilot a huge success, and it's obvious all involved are very grateful for the opportunity. Next meeting's the 17th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And also, I believe you have now the legislative update.
I do. As the Illinois General Assembly has not been in session since our last meeting, there's not a big legislative update. They reconvene January 10th, 2018, although while they've been in recess, conversations continue regarding pension obligations, the potential property tax fee freeze, i.e. Senate Bill 851 that's been referenced a few times tonight, and talk around the Tier 3 benefit structure for members, for TRS members, as a result of the new state law enacted in July by the General Assembly. Actually, that's a huge topic. As Tier 3 will be the first ever administered hybrid retirement plan that has two distinct and separate parts. A small lifelong defined contribution pension and a defined contribution plan similar to a 403B. Successful administration will require extensive modifications within TRS that include new information technology systems, a new structure for member accounts, enhancements to existing TRS reporting systems, alterations to the structure of TRS investment portfolio, and enhanced communication efforts to its members. TRS anticipates, as a result of all these things that need to be looked at, the legislation that was passed didn't cross all the Ts and dotted, not everything adds up to actually make this Tier 3 an option yet. Anticipates at the earliest date that Tier 3 may be implemented for members in July 1 is July 1 of 2019, so a year and a half from now. Speaking of TRS, right now, I'm excited to announce that I was actually just appointed to the TRS Board of Illinois. It's a 13-member TRS board. I was appointed last Tuesday and participated in their December 14th meeting, last Thursday in Springfield. We gave final approval to the $4.466 billion state contribution to the system for fiscal year 2019. Next meeting is scheduled for March 1st, 2018. That's all I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to information items. Dr. Lechner.
Yes, we'll begin with written communications. As you might guess, we received a significant amount of written communication concerning the levy this month. All of this written communication is posted online. We received some recently that will be posted at the next board meeting. Other written communication received was from Evan Cannell, Joan O., Jill Williamson, and Carol Esperance, Lynn Abbott, and Maya Coase regarding the band and orchestra program and the survey that we've done recently. Finally, John Powers regarding pension spiking and the CRC climate survey relating to harassment.
Great, go ahead, and you now have administrative announcements.
Yes, yes, and I was going to.
The first will sound familiar, I think.
I was going to congratulate Tracy on her appointment to the TRS board, and the things that you were talking about are things that are alive and well today. So congratulations. Kindergarten registration, already, we're planning for 2018-19, and the kindergarten registration is one of our very first important steps that we take. The registration will be at each elementary school in January. It opens on Thursday, January 18th between 9:30 AM and 6:30 PM, and then Friday, January 18th from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. All of the forms that are necessary are available at each of the elementary schools, but they're going to be also posted online right after winter break. Parents are encouraged to print their documents, fill them out, and bring them into school. Next, we have a FOIA received from Stephen Chichelli of SmartProcure requesting any and all purchase records from August 7, 2017, to present.
Thank you, and that takes us into our annual business.
Yes, the first item is the draft school calendar for 2018 and 19. We have a proposed draft calendar. Like every year, the schedule is in line with township holiday schedules. There are no other significant departures from our practice. We will ask the board to approve that next month. Any questions?
Any board member questions on the calendar? Okay, moving along.
Wait, I just have one question. I do.
Oh, sorry.
Do we really start that Thursday, before Labor Day?
Yes, that is correct. I know that people have lots of questions about it. We literally look at the first day of Nutria Summer School. We work backwards. We align all of our vacations with Nutria High School because we have a lot of parents who have kids in both school systems. So literally, Nutria is one of our driving factors to our calendar.
Okay. Any other questions on the calendar? Great, go ahead.
Okay, next, we have school fees, and we're recommending that overall, they stay the same, except for the 7th grade. The 7th grade instructional fee is recommended to increase $10 to cover the cost of iPad insurance. This follows the practice that we've established in previous years for 5th and 6th grades. In addition, this is not part of the fee process, but this is more of an announcement. We're changing our registration practices for bus service. The deadline for registrations will be extended all the way to July 13th, but it's going to include a hard cutoff. If you register after that date, you're going to have to wait until September 15th to be put on a bus if one is available, slots are available. And Ms. Buscemi has this report.
This year, when we did our bus registration, we included a late fee in the hopes that we would encourage parents to register prior to July 1st. We had an estimated 266 students that registered after the July 1st cutoff date, and this had a very negative impact on transportation at the beginning of the school year, causing confusion, delays, and overlapping routes. So what we're trying, we're recommending is that we extend the cutoff date to July 13th to guarantee your child a seat on the bus and give parents additional time to register. We recommended the hard cutoff, similar to what some of our neighboring districts are doing, and that means that if parents do not register by July 13th, then their students will not be added to a route until September 15th if there's room on the bus. So, and we are also recommending that the late fee is still there, since there's duplication of work when riders are added to routes after the cutoff.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Just to actually want to clarify, we will be holding spots for new move-ins, however, after the.
New move-ins will have a seat on the bus.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what's our procedure going to be to give people a heads-up on the bus registration and the new policies?
We're going to, we're going to start an extensive communication plan, similar to what we did last year. I think we're already sending one out this week.
Yes, it was announced officially tonight, and it was mentioned last month, and it's going to be in the board highlights, and then there's going to be a consistent communication plan on top of all of that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next up.
Okay, recently, we had a comment about teacher pensions and related District 39 expenses. This report is intended to give the community a greater understanding of this topic. The pension issue, in my view, is less about teachers and school systems and more about the state of Illinois. So let's start with a little history. Similar to social security, the intent is for teachers to pay a portion of their salary to TRS. Currently, that's 9%. And then the employer also makes a contribution. Since the early 1900s, it has been the state of Illinois' obligation to make the employer contribution on behalf of school systems. However, the state of Illinois also has a history of not meeting its funding obligations. As a result, the pension system, the TRS pension system remains underfunded. This is not true of other Illinois pension systems like the IMRF, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and is not facing a funding crisis. This system is funded locally with employer and employee contributions, and it's well-funded. District 39 has many IMRF employees. All of the support staff are falling under that pension system. I will say, though, that the state has recently taken steps to address the pension liability. One way the state is attempting to cover its debt is by shifting obligations. The state continues to seek new ways to fund TRS and has taken at least four steps in this direction. First, eliminating the early retirement option in fiscal year 2017, keeping teachers in the workforce longer. Second, charging districts for retired teachers' health insurance. Currently, we're being charged 0.88% for future health insurance obligations. Third, requiring school districts to make actual contributions to TRS. Currently, that amount is at 0.58% for District 39. As a result, the pension system, the TRS pension system remains underfunded. But this is not true of other Illinois pension systems like the IMRF, which is the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and is not facing a funding crisis. This system is funded locally with employer and employee contributions, and it's well-funded. District 39 has many IMRF employees. All of the support staff are falling under that pension system. I will say, though, that the state has recently taken steps to address the pension liability. One way the state is attempting to cover its debt is by shifting obligations. The state continues to seek new ways to fund TRS and has taken at least four steps in this direction. First, eliminating the early retirement option in fiscal year 2017, keeping teachers in the workforce longer. Second, charging districts for retired teachers' health insurance. Currently, we're being charged 0.88% for future health insurance obligations. Third, requiring school districts to make actual contributions to TRS. Currently, that amount is at 0.58% for District 39. And four, requiring districts to make excess salary payments to TRS, which is the focus of this report. So the first question is, what is an excess salary payment? The current law regarding excess salary payments was passed in June of 2005. Excess salary payments refers to a school, to charges a school district will pay to TRS when a salary increases over 6% for a retiring teacher. This fee is not a penalty. Prior to 2005, schools encouraged early retirement. Retirements actually reduced overall salary costs for districts. As a result, districts offered financial incentives. However, what benefited local school districts actually pushed greater pension obligations to the state. This led to the elimination of the earlier retirement option that we noted earlier, as well as added fees for salary increases over 6% for retiring teachers. So the next question, the next comment is that District 39 has taken efforts to minimize the excess salary payments to TRS. Beginning in 2008, District 39 lowered its incentive for teachers approaching retirement to 2.6%. Then in 2013, lowered the incentive further to a 5% limit on salary increases. Once a teacher's retirement plan is approved, this increases only 1% more than what non-retiring teachers could possibly earn. Additionally, teachers' salaries since 2013 have been based on CPI with a literal cap of 4%. However, a teacher can earn more money through educational advancements and/or stipends for additional after-school work. If a teacher's retirement plan is in effect, increases in earnings are capped. Our aim is to avoid any excess salary payment. However, a teacher without approved, without an approved retirement plan has the potential of earning more than 6% because of stipends for additional work. So how could an excess TRS salary payment actually happen for District 39? In each of these three situations, they're out of the district's control. We have taken steps to minimize payments, but we cannot eliminate them completely. For example, a teacher who doesn't have an approved retirement contract but earns more than 6% due to stipends or educational enhancements. Now, overall, District 39 may save some money because it doesn't have to pay 5% incentives over five years, but it could have an excess salary payment for one year. Next, a teacher gets a five-year retirement plan approved, but then retires unexpectedly before the five-year period is over. These are often for personal or family reasons. The district, again, may save some money overall because it doesn't have to pay the 5% for five full years. And finally, one that we recently discovered, a teacher resigns from District 39 but doesn't retire. The teacher goes out of the teaching and education, works in another career, and eventually applies for a pension. And their pension calculations would include the last raises they received in District 39. So now, let's look and see what this looks like financially. Here is the entire District 39 history of excess salary payments. You can see that, over time, the impact has been reduced. And those big blue lines are the teachers retiring, and it's the smaller lines that represent excess salary payments. Over the past six, over the past five years, six payments were made to teachers, to the TRS totaling $25,720. It's not possible to avoid salary payments every single year. However, as we've identified in this chart, efforts have been made not to make those payments. So why are these payments now uncommon? Again, we're going to reiterate that the current teacher's contract incentivizes teachers to announce retirement five years in advance by guaranteeing a 5% annual increase. Again, the current CPI-based contract has a ceiling of a base salary increases at 4% for all teachers. Second, because the TRS cap is 6%, teachers with an approved retirement plan can still earn 1% additional through stipends of extra work without triggering an excess salary payment, and we monitor this very carefully. Third, educational advancements, which are salary additions for graduate coursework, are most commonly experienced in earlier years in your career. As a result, this rarely triggers excess salary payments at the end of a career. In very rare cases, a teacher without an approved retirement contract can earn additional advancement in their final years. However, when this happens, both the district and the state of Illinois spend money less overall. If the teacher had earned that incentive many years prior, the district would have been paying a higher salary for a greater number of years. Any questions?
Board member questions? Go ahead, Ms. Cooney.
I do. I thought this was a real nice report that you wrote up, first of all. So what I might take away from this is, in 2005, the law was changed in Illinois as a result of, I guess, districts giving teachers raises in excess of 6% for their last five years until they retired. I'll go to that question in a minute, but my next question would be like, where did this even start? But secondly, the five-year raises as a result of giving notice that you're going to retire, just the reasoning behind that. But back to, again, I under, so what you're, what I'm understanding is, these aren't fines we're paying.
Correct.
While there's, it says penalty or fine, what we've, the reason that this law went into effect is, one, the state is obligated for all pension payments. So I imagine that this was, in 2005, happened as a result of maybe districts like ours who can afford to pay higher salaries as a result of our lower property taxes. We pay those salaries, yet the pension obligation is pushed to the rest of the state of Illinois. Correct?
That's part of it. That's correct.
Okay.
I just want to add that before 2005, school districts were doing this everywhere because they wanted people to retire early so they could then take advantage of locally having less teacher salary in terms of the whole budget.
I get, I'll get back, I'll get to that. So in my short view, this was good legislation for the entire state of Illinois. And why it's not a penalty or a fine is, we, by paying more, which has been referred to as a penalty or a fine, we're actually just choosing to do so. But we absorb that pension obligation, which is financially a smart move, so to speak, because it's more expensive to pay teachers who have been around a while than it is to pay newer, new hires.
Correct. So you saw that one of those pension payments was three grand.
Right. Which is why I appreciate the, whatever, presentation and the explanation. Now, back to my original question. Why has, where did it come from? I don't even understand why a teacher, why we make it a practice to give an additional up to 5% raise if someone gives a five-year notice of retirement. I haven't heard of that in any other, I'm not going to say district, because obviously that happens in other districts, like entity.
Yeah, that's pretty common to give a five-year contract for retiring teachers because that's what's permitted. And, and the idea is to incentivize them to sign on to a deal so we don't have to make any or fewer excess salary payments to TRS. The goal is to reduce that, that obligation.
But why would we be obligated if they didn't give that, that notice?
Yeah, if they don't give notice, then there's a potential that they could earn money above 6% by taking on extra duties and responsibilities and committees and, and then the, the payment-
So because, because the standard practice is to average over 4% of the last four years of someone's career?
Yeah, last four years.
So we're arguing if we didn't know that there was, notice wasn't given, someone could suddenly like go get their master's, get a PhD, and we pay as a result of those degrees and then suddenly retire?
That's a part of our contract for all teachers. So once you put in for retirement, the rules change. Those things don't, no longer apply.
So-
So we're just trying to manage that end-of-career salary.
We're trying to manage it with the best we, we can to avoid us doing pension obligation.
That is correct.
And continuing with the state. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
So Ray, in a sense, they're, we're preventing them from spiking their own salaries.
Exactly. Although spike is a-
I mean, no, I mean, but using language that's been thrown out.
That is correct. We are, we are incentivizing them not to do that.
Can, can I add to that? We're incentivizing them not to do that, and we have, as a result of Illinois statute that provides for that ability for them to, okay.
I just want to make one factual correction based on what Dr. Galouaki was signaling us very well, which is it's not averaged over four years. Please correct me if I'm wrong. It's four of the last 10 years. The highest four of the, oh, four consecutive years. Okay. Thank you for the correction.
Right.
Of the last 10. Yes, the highest four consecutive years of the last 10. Do we get it right?
Which is typically the last four years.
Which is typically the last four years.
All right. Thank you for that. And do we have any other questions about the report on clarifying the pension obligations? Nope. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to think.
Yeah, I think it was an excellent report. Thank you very much for the work.
Yeah, and I would say, because we did discuss this in the committee, that I think we're posting this stuff online, or we were going to.
Yeah, we can, yes, yes.
These are good reports.
Yeah.
But I'm in a place that's accessible.
We're going to package it a little differently. Not only be in the packet, but we're going to think about packaging some of this.
Showcase it.
Yeah, showcase it, right.
Okay. Let's move along to the property tax assessment, appeal resolutions.
Yes, we have two appeal resolutions this month, a residential and commercial PTAP for 2016, and Gail Buscemi has this report.
We have a residential property at 1330 Sheridan, and it's just a reminder that if, this is for 2016, if the reduction is granted in the first year of a triennial reassessment, it will roll over for the remainder of the years in the triennial. The commercial property is Manor Care at 432 Poplar Drive, and again, that would impact all three years of the triennial. All municipal partners have agreed to intervene in the appeal process on these two properties.
Okay, do we have any board member questions on that?
I do.
Go ahead.
Just as a reminder, why we enter, why are we, why do we intervene on commercial property tax appeals and residential property tax appeals when many appeal their taxes and we don't intervene?
We only intervene, this is again, it's just the standard practice, when it, when the amount of the appeal crosses a certain threshold, which is over $100,000. And then we, we treat everybody equally that way. We're just not picking and choosing, you cross the threshold and then we-
In effect, we're picking and choosing, we're picking and choosing anyone whose EAV changes by $100,000. We've decided that that is an amount enough that we've declared that we have the right to intervene in their property taxes.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's a very longstanding practice at the Village in Nutria. We all participate as a team, but that is not, it's not a grid house.
Thank you.
Yeah, and as a reminder, that is, you said all of the local government entities are planning to join that appeal?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the property tax appeal? No. Okay, that takes us to our second opportunity for public comments. And once again, recall that our new rules are in effect, but if there's anybody who'd like to speak, come forward at this time.
My name is Veeve Pivotalgaris.
I'm sorry, you have to use the mic so that everybody can hear you on the recording.
Is it Anna? No? How do you turn it on?
Push it up.
She said what?
Push it up.
It's the word to the left of the mic.
No, there's a switch on it. Veeve Pivotalgaris.
Okay, hello?
Yep, and, and just before you get going, I have to remind you that because you already spoke this today, then you have one minute to speak now. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's the new rule. So talk fast.
Real quick, I'd like to thank you all again for the work that you do on the school schedule. I have an opinion that I feel strongly about. I'd like to address the school calendar. There are two parts to this, the start of the school year and the many days off in the fall, particularly during Thanksgiving week. To have school start after Labor Day, current schedule is only one and a half days before the long weekend. The end of August, beginning of September is, in many ways, the best part of the summer, at least from a weather perspective. So I suggest eliminate some of the many days off in November. In, I looked at Kennelworth, Winnetka, and Glencoe, and we are the only district that gets all, all of Thanksgiving week off. Total days off after Labor Day at these schools through Thanksgiving is Wommet, nine and a half, Winnetka, six and a half, Kennelworth, eight, Glencoe, eight. Also, why is Halloween a half-holiday? We're the only ones that get that off. So in summary, the extra days off before Labor Day are so much nicer to have off when it's still summer and nice. Also, equally important is, the many days off during November, including Halloween, are problematic for many working parents. So I kindly request that you consider starting after Labor Day, and to compensate, take away some of the very numerous fall days off.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you because that's, that's Avita Vulgaris, is that the correct name?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And-
Was that rule stated before? Because I wouldn't have gotten up.
It was-
I'll reach back to you after tonight.
I'm sorry. And we'll reach out to you, and you're welcome to speak at the next meeting, and you're welcome to send us an email, and we read all our emails.
Okay, I'd like to comment because Dr. Lechner before listed the emails that he received. My husband actually wrote last night about the calendar, and his name was not listed. Okay.
So, so, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you explain?
Yeah, the board, the board reports are posted Friday, so once they're posted.
All right.
They'll be there next month. And we're not voting until next month.
A lot of people, I mean, we're not aligned with Nutria anyway.
Okay. We will look forward to your email and future communication. I'm sorry that you got caught in the new rule. That, that's just what happened. So I apologize for that, but we're gonna-
Are your comments going to be?
They will.
No?
Yep, they're all taken into account. So come on forward and please state again your name, and it is on, your name and where you live, please.
My name's Jason Paul. I live in Wommet, and I'm currently a senior at Nutria High School. And I'd like to talk about the band and orchestra program that was discussed at both the last meeting and the October meeting. Music has been a very important part of my education through, through District 39. I was all, kind of grown through 8th grade. I've been attending District 39 schools, and my brother is currently an 8th grader at WGHHS. Excuse me. At, also participating in the band program and the jazz band program. And I'd like to address the, the student perspective on the statement that the board had made on October 23rd, I believe it was. So as I said before, music has been a very important part of my education throughout District 39 and Nutria. And I've been able, and the experience that I've had through District 39 have, have I felt, I've, that I, excuse me, it's late. The experiences that I've had in District 39 have, have prepared me in a, in a unique way for the rigors of Nutria and being able to juggle a schedule. The early morning rehearsals breed a very dedicated music student that is well-known throughout Nutria to, to excel within the band and orchestra program. Myself personally, I currently am enrolled in three different, separate music ensembles, and throughout my career in high school, I've, I've participated in six separate music ensembles throughout my career. And being able to juggle that rigorous schedule was due to the early morning rehearsals and the sectional pullouts that, that allowed me to prepare for the, the scheduling, scheduling difficulties that we encounter in Nutria quite often. And all while doing that, I have been able to maintain a very rigorous academic schedule as, by any standard measure. I was named to be a National Merit Scholar, and all of these things I credit to the, the strong curricular music program in District 39, which has been, been steady throughout my entire Nutria career, and it is well-known that this program is the lifeblood of Nutria music and, and I hope will continue to be.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comments at this time?
Good evening. My name is Gail Schnitzer Eisenberg, and I'm a Wommet resident, and I'm excited that the kindergarten registration deadline is very much relevant to me. I have two children going to Central. I am here in my capacity as a Nutria Township trustee. There seems to have been a lot of confusion about property taxes and property tax appeals during this process of your- during this process of your tax levy discussions throughout the public. I wanted to announce that Jan Churchwell, the township assessor, is offering a public course on January 10th from 7:00 to 8:00 at the Nutria Township, 739 Elm Street, where she will be going over the Cook County real estate tax calendar and the services provided by the township assessor free of charge to all of our residents. As all of you know, and I'm sure the public is well aware, our current county property tax assessment process is broken, and it relies upon the appeals process in order to ensure accurate assessments. This process in itself is inequitable and creates huge problems regarding income equality issues, as well as an issue with the amount of impact on commercial and residential property. But it's the system that we have, and the best we can do right now is to work within that system. So I'm glad that we have a fabulous township assessor in Jan Churchwell to provide the service to our community here in D39. As well, just a little bit of correction is that the township is not participating in any kind of appeals process. That's the first I had heard about it. But I assumed that you meant only municipal functions rather than all local governments, and I think there was a confusion in that conversation. Now speaking as a parent, I am, I had written to the board, and I know that you all have considered those comments, but we moved here as one of the many families who moved here for the education system and moved back to this, to the district that my husband went through and that my dad went through. And I'm excited that my kids will be able to have that same quality education. But they can't do that if we do not fund them, and we can't do that if we do not have the best teachers available. So I thank you all, and I appreciate your hard work on this matter.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak at this time? As a reminder, you have one minute, and I'm going to ask you to please limit yourself to only one minute. Also state your name again, please.
Sorry, yes. So my name is Carl Hopman, and I live in Wommet District 39. And the reason I'm coming again is because I was, it was difficult for me to express myself properly in previous time, and I apologize for being over the limit. So I would like to be able to, to finish properly. So my second request is to reduce the tax levy. The average salary of District 39 is $85,000. This compares to average salaries for teachers in private North Shore schools of about $60,000. Instead of asking for an increased levy, why don't we ask for a general salary reduction of about 20%? This would keep the district 15% above the fair market rate, which is the private school salary. It would also partly reflect the increase in our property taxes that results from the elimination of the federal deduction. Property tax rates are the highest in the nation at 2.7% ahead of New York.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry, that's the end of your minute.
I have seven seconds, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I keep the time. You are done with your time. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Hi again.
You have a minute.
Wommet. This is being recorded, right?
Yes.
Good, okay, just want to make sure. Don't put that on my time. Please. Nutria Neighbors did not publish Ms. Wyrick's name. The new organization, news organization, North Cook News, did. We linked to the piece because we do agree that appealing your taxes while pushing for higher taxes for others is hypocritical. No one ever went back to the clerk and said their assessment came in too low. Those who disagree that it's hypocritical should then have no problem with a news organization publishing public and widely available information. Those who do have a problem should take it up with North Cook News, not us. More about yesterday, eyewitnesses over the course of most of an hour described sustained physical intimidation and verbal harassment so extreme that the high school boys in question had no choice but to leave the place where they were sharing information and gathering signatures. We have made a statement and asked for an apology from those people involved, including the organizations they represent. This lack of civility by some and determination to crush dissent points all the more to the board's responsibility to show that one can challenge the status quo and not be attacked.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make a statement? Any other public comments? Yes, no? If you'd like to make a statement, now's the time to come forward. And again, you'll have one minute. Thank you.
You, Beth Feeley, Wommet. You heard from many people tonight, and I first wanted to say thank you for making special rules for tonight so that they could be heard. I also wanted to reiterate that at Nutria Neighbors, we encourage civil dialogue and debate on ideas, including those about the levy, rather than ad hominem attacks and spreading falsehoods and impugning motives, as you may see with other community groups. A visit to our website makes it clear that we are committed to this high standard. I am encouraged by the great turnout tonight and by people paying attention, and by you listening to all members of the community, the ones who are here, the ones who wrote, the ones who signed our petition. And I do encourage you to read those comments, and I think our community is going to ultimately benefit, and I look forward to what we can do together if we can debate ideas, avoid the ad hominem attacks and falsehoods. And just wanted to say, I appreciated what Erin Stone started with, the idea of contemplating peace on earth, which she started with this evening, and just wanted to wish all of you a peaceful holiday season. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment? Okay, seeing no other public comments, it's time to move to our action items. And the next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Steen, thank you. I would like to please remove item three, approval, approve the residential property tax assessment appeal resolution. And item number four, approve the commercial property tax assessment appeal resolution off the consent agenda.
Great, so those two items will be removed. Got that? Then, any other items need to be removed? Okay, Mr. Penzica, please proceed with a motion.
I move to approve the personnel report dated December 18, 2017. I move to approve the fiscal year 2019 student fees as contained in Exhibit A of the report. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between November 14, 2017, and December 18, 2017 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $478,301.63. O&amp;M Fund, $215,025.69. Depth Service, $661,871.25. Transportation Fund, $139,917.07. Capital Projects, $236,509. Tort Fund, $195,999. For total all funds of $1,927,353.64. I move to approve the manual checks issued between November 14, 2017, and December 18, 2017 in the following amounts. Educational Fund, $349,189.47. O&amp;M Fund, $4,285.92. Transportation Fund, $52.86. For total all funds of $353,528.25.
Thank you. The motion has been made. May I have a second?
A second.
The motion has been made and seconded, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The yeas have it. The motion is carried. Now I seek a motion to approve the residential number 1712-01 property tax assessment and appeal resolution.
I move to approve the residential number 1712-1 property tax assessment appeal resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Go ahead.
Just want to make clear why I'm removing it from the consent agenda. First of all, I don't know how it finds its way on there. From what I understand, the consent agenda is when we assume that most are going to vote yes, or there's not going to be any controversy over it, well, maybe even question over it. Controversy is just the wrong word. I've questioned this before, and I'm going to question it moving forward, especially in light of how we just, lots of people just stood up and we defended the right, including from the Nutria Township trustee, and arguing that Cook County's property tax system is broken and therefore relies on appeals. Why we would stand in front of or intervene any sort of property tax appeal regardless of how much it's asking for. So that's why I'm removing them, and I'm going to continue to, and would appreciate them not even being on the consent agenda.
I'm sure we can arrange that. Any other comments on the motion? Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. On, let's see, we probably have to do this by individuals, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. The motion has carried. The yeas have it. Now I seek a motion to approve the commercial number 1712-02 property tax assessment appeal resolution.
I move to approve the commercial number 1712-02 property tax assessment appeal resolution.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comments on this one?
Same.
Same, all right. I like the efficiency. Any other comments on this one? Great. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. No, sorry, that's a no. I take that back. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, the yeas have it. Now I seek a motion to adopt the 2017 levy.
I'd like, I have discussion. Oh, okay.
We'll get to that.
I move to adopt the 2017 levy.
And, excuse me, the motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded, and now is the time for anyone to make comments if they choose to make comments. Go ahead, Ms. Kearney.
I choose to make comments, thank you.
Excellent.
Check them off. In all honesty, I came into this meeting tonight planning to just oppose extending the levy. And my number, really, my, my three top reasons are, one, we don't create the budget until we know what we're getting from the state. So it is in arrears. So I have, just principally have a problem with that, with not first identifying what we need to budget or what we need and budget forward and then ask for that. The levy extension that we ask for in a week affects our '19 fiscal year, which is the following year. So what I'm saying, that I think what has definitely, has of course been a longstanding practice of the district, I don't necessarily agree with. I'd like us to look at what we anticipate our needs are before we just know what we can get and back into that. Two, I don't like that the forecasts, when we looked at five different forecasts, assuming a, whatever, not extending the levy in 2017 plus the potential of property tax freeze, and one or the other, that it didn't, that we, it implied that, that no spending altercations were made to that. While it is a forecast, a five-year forecast, and things that we have discussed, our spending is simply that, forecasted. It's not set in stone. So to dismiss that altogether, not saying that we've dismissed it altogether, but we, we did until converse, until questions were asked of this board. I have issue with that. Three, you know, I've continued to hear cuts in education, cuts. That might be a perspective of some, but a five-year forecast, again, is a five-year forecast. We have not spent dollars yet. We have not made decisions yet. So what some may be touting as a cut is really just maybe not spending that we'll agree to do, even though we might want to do it. We've received new information since then, since the meeting, though. And since, I do also appreciate the importance of fiscal management for this board, and also appreciate that as a result of state legislation, this is the practice, or these are the habits that we've formed. I appreciate, too, that these are standard assumptions, and that this is the first time this board has actually been questioned in, as long as I can remember, about extending a levy. So, and it is a very real expectation, as it has been for three years, that there will be a property tax freeze. And not that I have a problem with that. I actually do have a problem with the property tax freeze, though, that only limits revenue and doesn't give any expense relief, and I haven't seen that in Senate Billie 51, although I do see that they will exempt debt and pension obligation. We will be able to levy against that. So finally, here's where I'm at. I'll never understand why we ask for 4.36, and then when people say that that's way above CPI and stop saying that, we're like, well, that's not what we're going to get. We're going to give it 2.88, as if, okay, we're all supposed to feel good about that. I say we ask, I'm, I'm, I'm for asking for 2.88, but I'm not for asking for 4.36. 2.88 is what we have forecasted in our budget. I think it's a compromise. I think it's something that's important in front of the district right now. This is a different situation than 2011, not outside of the vacuum, and that's where I stand with that. So if you, I don't know what the process is with that. To make a motion to change, to amend the levy.
Okay, so what you would do is you would say that you'd like to move to change the levy request to 2.88? That's right. So you move to amend the motion, right? So I think, I think that's the correct procedure. You move to amend the motion, and then that would have to be seconded, and if it is seconded, it can be voted on, it will be voted on, yes or no. And then if we vote yes, the motion that's currently open would be amended to 2.88 instead of the 4.63 or whatever it is. So before we get to the motion, though, if you don't mind, let's, let's have any, if we want to have any additional, either questions on the procedure or questions on the motion as it stands, if that's okay with you, we'll hang on for a second on the motion that you're going to make. Is that okay? So we're going to keep talking for a minute, and then you're going to say, I move to amend the motion, if that's okay with you? Okay. Mr. Sizeretti, you have your mic on.
Yeah, I am sympathetic, Tracy, to your perspective here, but I think my perspective is that the way that we approach the tax levy now, while not perfect, it has allowed us and will continue to allow us to invest in our capital. And what I mean by that is, I'm thinking of Highcrest, and I'm thinking of all the investments we've made over the years, and I think, big picture, and that's how I like to try to think of this, is we are using the new construction dollars to finance our capital improvements, and, and I think that is our plan for this year, and I'm committed to Highcrest, and I think this board is committed to Highcrest, or at least the first part that relates to securing the entrance of Highcrest and adding the school, the new rooms in Highcrest. And, and that is why I, I understand that, that, you know, it, it looks like we are, we are overreaching, but, but given the inherent limitations in the PTAL law, that, that we will be limited to CPI inflation. That's my understanding, and I, I think I'm right on this, because we've talked about it a bunch of times, and I know I've been corrected a few times for being wrong about certain aspects of this. But I think the other, the other thing that resonates with me just in this debate is that, that CPI goes up and up and up, and over the past, you know, God knows how many years, I think that the information I've seen is that wages generally have not gone up. is that wages generally have not gone up in our town at that rate. And I think, I think what we're seeing in this debate, and in the public comment, and you name it, is, is that this prolonged period in our community of wages not going up, even though it's, it's a relatively wealthy community, you know, it's, it's gone to a point where, where we, we really should think about whether or not the PTEL inflation amount is the minimum or, or a maximum. And, and, and this is something that I think we're all, we've talked about before. I'm bringing it up for the public to, who have not been to our meetings, where we've discussed this. But it's, it's not something that I am personally willing to act on, given that I think I have a fairly good understanding of where our money comes from and where it's going, and have confidence in our management and how we've been managing the district.
Okay. Do we have other board members who want to comment?
So, I view our role as board members as both being a liaison to the community and a steward of the district. And part of that stewardship is good financial management. And we have principles that we've adhered to that I actually believe in, and believe that we're supporting that. And so, I'm going to support the levy as proposed, and for a couple reasons. I think that, as Frank, you mentioned earlier, much of our costs are both fixed, and the increases are fixed. Our costs for healthcare, for salaries, for utilities, they're going to increase every year. We need to keep that fund balance above 30% as long as possible. If we would have to go to referendum, there's no guarantee that that referendum would pass, and at that time, we would have to make critical choices about cuts in our program. I believe, as a good steward, we need to delay that scenario as long as possible. The other factors that go into my decision is that this is an unstable time, for lots of reasons, on almost every level of government. We also engage in a deficit spending, which is why we're trying to slow down how quickly we reach that 30% fund balance. And then the other reason I talked about it last time at the board meeting is that we need to be forward-thinking. Part of being a high-performing district is constantly looking at, how do we need to change to prepare our students for a rapidly changing world? And to provide the same type of education in the same type of facilities wouldn't kind of reach that goal of providing a high-quality education over time. So, I'm going to vote for the levy, and Tracy, I appreciate what you're saying about the 2.88. Why don't we just ask for what we want? And it's because we know what's going to happen, that if we ask for 2.88, we're going to get maybe 1.2, or 1.15. Who knows what the number is? But we need to try and do what's best for the district, and I believe it's asking for a number that we believe will get us to what I believe we need.
Okay. Other comments? Ms. Schaff?
So, I'll try to keep these a little shorter than I've written them, but no, that's okay.
That's okay.
I'm going to echo a little bit what you've said, but first of all, I do want to thank the community members for their interest and passion in our district, and for all of the emails and the talks during our board meetings. We've, I've read every single one of the emails, listened to everything people have said, and these have, all of your comments have helped me mold my thinking on the levy extension. And I think this process has been really good. We've been forced to take a step back, look at our levy, really understand it, and understand it better, clarify what our budgeting practices and principles are. And we've looked at a lot of different scenarios. I believe these are good scenarios for us to look at. And like Lisa, I think as school board members, we have to be the stewards of District 39. We're responsible for the students in our district. We are responsible to deliver the best education that we can in the most efficient manner possible with the funds that we have. And since 2011, the referendum then, and that's also when I joined the board, when the referendum was voted on, we have run very lean. Not only have we committed to carry lower reserves at a 30% minimum than any one of the Nutria, Feter districts, but we spend less per student of all of these feeder schools, and we deliver equal or superior test results across all subjects for our students. Additionally, over the last seven years, we've, as John points out, we've invested much needed capital into our six buildings, upgrading and modernizing and keeping up with modern curriculum for our facilities. And we've done that without depleting our reserves, I'm proud to say, and without coming back to the community asking for more money through a referendum. And that was promised in 2011 when we passed the referendum. I think not extending the levy for the '17 tax year to keep pace with inflation, as we're legally allowed to do, amounts to a cut in our education program, because the cost of our goods and services will continue to rise. And we're going to be forced to deficit spend to cover operating expenses, and we'll reach our minimum fund balance target of 30% much sooner, and that is not a place we really want to be. What we're doing, then, is we're just kicking our funding can, the funding can down the road, and the educational program was self-inflicted doing that. Additionally, it's my feeling that there's still great uncertainty at the state level, even with the new education funding bill that was passed this year. That two-year property tax freeze we've been talking about is looming out there and could likely be passed into law in early 2018. And with the uncertainty of that legislation, which would freeze our revenues for another two years, I think it's irresponsible to voluntarily freeze our, our revenues for this year, or to cut, cut our ask. I, that doesn't seem like very good stewardship to me, and therefore, I will be voting to extend the full levy tonight.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Penzica?
First, I have an ongoing procedural concern. We've had months of meetings on this, and, and I know information can change, et cetera, but changing something at the last minute is dangerous. The implications of what it means, the, the lack of having the same level of scrutiny as, as the proposal that's been on the table for over three months, is, I think, something that we need to be very careful about. So, procedurally, if there is an approved amendment or proposal, I will be voting against it on that basis. I, I think that, that's been very useful, the hundred-plus emails and the comments at, at the last several board meetings are very educational. I read all the emails, obviously listened to all of the comments, both pro and con, and I think I've learned something from both sides. One of the things is to, to not just do something the same way, because that's the way you've always done it. So, I went back to think about what place the levy plays in our school budget, and what we committed to the community. The commitment in the 2011 referendum was to maintain great schools while spending within our budget, and to avoid the disruption of asking for another referendum for at least five years. At the time of the referendum, the district had been taking the inflation-based levy increase every year. It was part of the known baseline when we did the referendum. It is now more than five years later. We have not had to do another referendum, so we've met that goal. But the goal was really to avoid the disruption. We have a five-year budget that, barring state actions, will remain above our reserve threshold for at least another five years, so I think we're meeting that obligation. If we do have to go to a referendum, the reasons for it are more than, than just procedural. Vendors can't give us their best prices if they don't know if we'll have the money to follow through with the contract. People looking to move into our community will be concerned that a referendum not passing will impact their schools, or one that does pass will change their anticipated taxes. Staying on budget and minimizing this disruption, I believe, is important. There are other aspects to our budget. One is cost, which we brought up, we brought up in our, our finance committee meetings. We've had at least three finance committee meetings since this process started. So far, there has not been a significant enough cost reduction that anyone has brought up in any of those finance meetings. So, we have, at this point, after three months, no specific cost reduction. So, to assume that there are significant cost reductions out there is, is something that has not yet been validated. To me, a related topic that was brought up by both people, pro and con, is to look at our reserve levels. From a business background, I look at reserve as an inventory. When risks go up, and they do with the state considering significant cost shifts, the inventory or reserve level needs to be higher. However, no business runs well if this inventory is too large. So, we need to establish a reserve range, not just a minimum, and I think that's also one of the topics that's been keyed up in, in our committees. So, these, these topics are what's going to influence my vote tonight.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, without completely repeating half the things that everyone else has said, I do want to acknowledge a couple things. One is, I actually do want to echo thanks to everyone who took the time to write letters, to express their opinions, both in person and email, and also the conversations that we have had amongst ourselves, which have been, I think, very, on, on both sides, very educational, and I think has helped plant some seeds of things that I would like to do moving forward, ways that I, ways that I think, like I said, I think Frank, Frank said it well, is, you know, and, and maybe Tracy, too, that, you know, just because we've done it doesn't mean we should. And I think we have all agreed on that. I, and however, I think at this moment in time, given the circumstance that we have in front of us, and the history, you know, our historical decisions, it's an imperfect system right now. And we have to make a decision within that system at this time, and, and for that reason, I'm actually, I wholeheartedly support the extension of the levy. However, I also am looking forward to sitting down and looking at our budgets moving forward, and looking at how we might always continue to improve, and be forward-thinking always, while being stewards of our, of District 39, and supporting our students by providing them with the best possible education that we can.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I have responses to a couple comments for just where I might have felt like I was spoken for.
Okay.
One, John, I'm committed to Highcrest renovations if we can afford it. Just, you had said, I think we're all committed to that. Of course, we are. Again, I'm going to say, if we can afford it. Two, I'm just reminding everyone that in the forecast showing just the 2017, if we weren't to extend the levy today, that put us one year earlier to referendum. In all our conversations, in all forecasts, we have been deficit spending, hence the expense is not tied to revenue comment. We have been deficit spending regardless, and as if implying if we don't just extend the levy to the full extent that we can, we're not going to have enough money. Everyone's forgetting that we can always ask. That's called a referendum. The difference is, extending the levy, we're allowed to extend the levy up to 4.99% year over year without asking. So, we're never on the table without the ability to ask our constituents for money. Furthermore, going to the 2.88 is not forecasted at, well, actually, that's the exact same forecast of, number one, all standard assumptions and everything stay the same. Two, the Senate Bill 851 will be coming in the next legislature, if it is coming. We just proposed, we just approved bids for, going out to bid for Highcrest, Phase One. We don't vote on spending that money until, I think, February at the earliest, right, or latest, earliest?
February.
Which, we have the opportunity to see if that tax freeze has been imposed, and I would actually suggest at this point that we don't. I give, I go to yours. This might be, and you, too, Lisa, your comments, these are uncertain times, maybe more uncertain than previous years, and agree that there might have to be, we might have to reconsider the amount of money that we have in our reserves. But my next question would be, Aiden, why do we continue to spend it? We might need to look at that before spending, if we're going to be making those decisions. And two, I forgot to, to that side of it. I'm almost done. Mark. Oh, you said something about, in the last, we've been discussing Finance Committee. You're the chair of the Finance Committee. I'm not on Finance Committee. Mr. Sizeretti did bring up, two meetings ago, that he'd like an ad hoc budget committee to look at our spending, and he did bring that up in response to constituents bringing up, or asking the board to consider the extension of the tax levy this year based on circumstances today. I would have loved to have heard the Finance Committee looking at that more, and think it should be, at our next meeting, Committee of the Whole, whatever it falls under, I believe it's Committee of the Whole, because it's going to be Finance and Facilities, that we get that ad hoc group together. And would have liked, looking at those spending cuts ahead of time. So, those are my comments there.
Yes, go ahead. So, so what I'm going to ask is that we all do one response. If we want to do one response, Tracy, you've had yours, and anybody wants to respond one more time, that's fine with me. Sorry.
Sorry. Trying to get my train of thought back again. I think the spirit of the discussion regarding looking at budgets and reviewing was in my, when I suggested it, and when we discussed it, my sense of it had nothing to do, actually, with kicking the can down the road. It was a responsible, what I thought was a responsible discussion regarding how often we should take a look at that. And in my opinion, it would be irresponsible, actually, to do full deep dive, you know, audits and evaluations yearly, because it's caught, I would imagine, that's very costly, and people do not want us, I've heard people actually tell us that they do not want us to waste money on studies all the time. I actually do, though, think that there is a time, there's a cycle to it, and I had asked that question myself at our board meeting, and the response was every five years ago, five years or so. And so, that would mean that it is, it is time responsibly to do that, you know, deep look. But it wasn't, I just wanted to clarify that, that the spirit of that had nothing to do, in my mind, with the idea of not making a decision on extending the levy this year. It had to do with, you know, examining things moving forward and, and adjusting if, if necessary for changes that have taken place in a responsible manner.
Any other responses? Go ahead.
I just want to say, I, I really liked Alice, your words about all the thankfulness for all the community input. I think that we've had, both internally and externally, a dialogue. And, and what brings me joy at this time of year is that there are so many people that really care about healthy communities and strong schools. And it's okay that we don't really agree on how we get there. It's just nice that so many of us care about these things.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I had a quick comment. We, we went this year to Committee of the Whole, so that everyone could comment. And what's very nice is that the entire board has gone to almost every single Committee of the Whole, so everybody on the board has had the opportunity to bring items up. And there were some items that were brought up at the last meeting from members not on the specific committee. So, we, we try to make sure that everyone's voice is listened to.
Yeah, I just want to, I will just jump on that, actually, and say that I want to be clear to board members, at least, that, that is the reason that we went to the Committee of the Whole, is so that everybody can come. of the Whole, is so that everybody can comment at any Committee of the Whole meeting. And I think we've had a practice that, in fact, people have been able to speak in the past at any committee meeting, whether or not they're on the committee. So if there's any doubt about whether that is acceptable or permissible or encouraged, the answer is yes. We, we function and have functioned as a board of seven people, and we design our policies and practices so that we can all have input on any topic. So I hope that's clear and that everybody, if that's been confusing in the past, I'm surprised, but I hope that will not be unclear for the future. Beyond that, all I want to say is that I do think, and several people have said it, but I'm going to echo it, I'm actually proud to be a part of this group because I think this has been a, an exceptionally well-researched and understood issue. I know several board members at the beginning of this process said to me, I'm not really, I don't feel like I know this topic very well. I think we've all gotten into the topic deeply, and I think we all understand it. And I'm happy to say that, at least in my belief, I can say very clearly that we are casting informed votes tonight. And that, at the end of the day, is our responsibility. So thank you all, board members, for that. Thank you, community, for your comments and input into that process. That is part of the, the way that we're supposed to work. So with that said, Tracy, I believe you'd like to make a motion. And I think you should, you can go ahead and say, I'd like to make a motion to amend the.
I got it.
OK, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the current proposed tax levy extension of 4.36 to 2.88.
OK. And with that said, we, we need a second.
Second.
OK. The motion has been made and seconded, and I think we've had probably enough comments. So let's go ahead and, do you want?
No.
OK, let's go, OK, let's go ahead and have the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend, this current motion, to 2.88 instead of whatever the 4.63 or whatever the number is.
No.
Yes.
No.
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 No. OK, the motion does not carry. That leaves us back at the original motion. And again, without further ado, let's go ahead and have the clerk call the roll on the, oh, I, yeah, we've made the motion, so we're OK. Have the clerk call the roll on the motion as it was originally proposed.
Yes.
No.
Frank Penzica?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. OK, the motion has been made and carried. Thank you very much for that discussion and information. That moves us to conference items. Is there any old business? I don't see any old business. Do we have any new business? Do we have any good in welfare? OK. May I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. OK, the motion has been made and carried. We are now adjourned to executive session. The time is 10:31. Thank you very much to all who attended.